Now you're micromanaging, now you're telling me how I should take it down.
Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. Well, let's do the pledge of allegiance.
We don't have it on here.
Well, you can still do it. It's not in action.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Oh geez, okay. Any other questions of the agenda there? I'll say questions. Okay, Travis?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Gene, aye.
Just a couple. Good morning, Liza. We started without you. Sorry. No, you're fine. We didn't do anything yet except approve the agenda. You missed the pledge of allegiance and the agenda approval. Is there any, I just got a housekeeping question. Are there any, do we have to follow this religiously then? Or can we, like if we have one that goes pretty quick and we wanna call in a different department?
I was thinking the same thing. I was gonna ask that too.
I'd say as long as we didn't go to the end of the agenda, but I think if we're going in order or if we got fillers, I don't think it's a big deal.
Cause we, I know under other budgets, we can do those in between if we get time. I'm sure, cause they don't have time. I just wanna, sometimes I'm asked, well, why didn't you do, okay. First up, NDSU Extension Service, Craig Askew. You might as well come forward.
And speak into the mic. Yep, well, they both were.
Either one. If you wanna stand or sit, I'm here for sitting. Anybody got any questions? You're the first ones.
Do you guys all have copies?
I think we do.
Okay. So... So if you have copies in front of us, the first one is our part-time administrative assistant. We finally have one hired. She started today. So, um, that fifteen thousand is roughly what her budget will be. There was an amendment from Alice after talking to her. That's the amount that she, we should put in there for the next year is fifteen thousand. Then the officer secretary, that would be Cindy's. Based upon the proposed salary increase and, um, that you guys are discussing and stuff, if you go with that allotted amount based upon what you guys requested from Alice, that would be the number there, the forty-nine thousand two ninety-six. The next is my salary. That's gonna go up to thirty-four thousand eight hundred. Uh, they get a salary increase and then I'm, I have over twenty years of experience, so I get some merit increase this year too, so that would be the final. For the final number there, the next one, next one is Meta's. Retirement, that's an estimate. I'm guessing that would stay roughly the same, but that would be one that obviously we won't have the final numbers until later.
Actually, the final number on that credit is gonna be six, six thousand two hundred.
The which one?
For his retirement share?
Two thirty-two.
That's not my retirement share. That must, that would be Cindy's.
What'd you say the number is? Six thousand two hundred.
Um, health insurance there again, that's an estimate. I don't know. We don't have, we don't, okay. Rental premises, that'll go up. So that'll be fourteen thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. That's our rental agreement for this year. And I believe that's in, it'll, our rental agreement, I believe, will expire in Jan- or January, or November, November first of twenty twenty-five, I believe, is the date. So, something that will need to be figured out. I'm pretty sure it's the last year of that. After, after next year. Travel per diem, I put in eight thousand. That's an increase of quite a bit from last year. Last year I had, I was at about seventy-five hundred. And then at, kinda at the end to make numbers work or whatever, that number is lower. So I can tell you that we will probably be over on that line item this year. Uh, most of our requirements for meetings and travels and stuff like that come in the fall, so that's where a lot of our budget hasn't been spent yet. That'll be coming. Phone, I put in twenty-four hundred. I'd get, I know you guys are still in discussions with how that's all gonna work with the new phone system and stuff like that. But, uh, with the rates and stuff, but based upon what I could figure out to the best of my knowledge, that's about where it'll be. And then everything else is pretty much the same as last year. Memberships and fee left out the same. Registration fee left out the same. Publications left out the same. Operating and postage and the furniture and program supplies pretty much left all that the same. I dropped the program supplies a little bit, cause I don't foresee that we'll need as many supplies as we did last year, so. Kind of a quick overview, but then I guess if you add the extra five hundred dollars in there, it would be at one ninety-two, seven oh seven.
Seven oh seven?
Yeah.
I suppose with the increase.
With the added five hundred to the retirement. So... That's kinda where we're at. The increases are in salary and then obviously hiring on a part-time position person now, hopefully for, for a full year. Let's, because we've only been out about, the last two years, we've only had one for about half the time for circumstances that they've had to leave, so.
And the other reason why membership fees haven't gone up, but your travel expenses have, is just cause that's more about mileage and more about room and board?
Well, the travel expenses, I increased it five hundred. Last year I requested about seventy-five hundred. And then, obviously, the cost of hotel rooms and all that, it went up a little bit, so I increased it five hundred dollars. It's, was only budgeted for thirty-five hundred last year in order, and I, and I did request seven thousand. So it was cut in half in order to make the numbers work. Based upon how this mill levy thing went. Obviously, you guys know the mill levy failed. So, that's something that will have to be discussed at a later time. If we wanna try it again in November, it's probably something that needs to be acted on pretty quickly. Or if we're gonna just wait two more years and try it again.
I did put it in his mill and, um, what the general fund would cover, his total budget here would be fifty thousand five hundred. And it's on the transfer sheet. If you guys look at that transfer sheet, um, just so you're aware that what you're looking at here, the one ninety-two, seven oh seven, uh, the mills that they get right now covers up to fifty thousand five hundred. And, and we'll look at the blue book later, but just so you're aware of that for your...
So we need an extra fifty thousand over what the mills will cover?
Fifty thousand five hundred, right. And that's what we've normally done, Craig, is the general fund covers it. We're not milling for that.
Right.
Because we can't do that, but that would be a transfer from the general fund for what he's showing right now.
Yeah, our, our thought process with the mill levy increase for extension was just to show this is where this money's actually coming and where it's going for, but the public voted it down pretty heavy. Um, we'll have to look at it.
Part of the reason was is because at least the people that talked to me, and I don't know what all the rules and regulations are, but a lot of people think it was a tax increase. So that's why I got it voted down.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think everyone understands.
I, I agree. I think they realize that we were just trying to make sure to get it all into one area.
Just trying to clear up the language, clear up the language, but a lot of the general public saw it as a tax increase, which it wasn't, but that, so whatever, the message didn't get across there, so. Not saying it would've passed, passed without that, but that was part of the reason. I know it failed.
What did, did we ever figure out anything with that? Did Eli visit with, and you about, uh?
Oh, the thing is, okay, you guys have...
Does that affect your budget then?
The thing is, their budget is the budget. And those monies are all paid out of those funds they get back from those classes and stuff. They go into a fund.
They go into the next line item, which is program supplies and operating. And Cindy understands that better. We are going to try, we've all been extremely busy. I know Cindy has talked to Gwen and Carmen, and we're gonna try to s- get sit down here sometime in the near future and make sure that we understand how that all works correctly.
I've got all my notes. I'm just ready to call Cindy about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's, but we are, it's, 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 it's kind of a catch twenty-two on how the county, from what, how I understand it, how the county wants it and how the state wants it. There's some differences there, so we gotta try to come up with a solution on where it should all go, so it can be, it's accounted correctly, but it just needs, then again, just needs to be cleared up a little bit better.
Only even for the travel, we had a meeting Thursday, we were talking about it, and a lot of hotels aren't accepting state rates.
It's tougher, it's tougher to get state rates. You, it's almost, at least with me that does a lot of traveling, you can't get a state rate for a Friday or Saturday night anymore.
No, not on weekends.
It's almost impossible. So, Sunday through Thursday, some will do it, but some will say, well, we'll give it to you, but if for some reason there's something that is a higher demand, then they can cancel it on you. So, yeah.
And then, just for reference, um, NDSU also pays a portion of your guys' expenses too, correct? As far as the salaries go?
They pay fif- NDSU Extension pays fifty percent of our salaries plus all their benefits. So the numbers that you see is just fifty percent that the county puts in for salaries.
For the agent.
For the agent and Meta. Yeah, they pay all Cindy's and all part, the part-time position too, which, but there's no benefits with the part-time position.
Yeah.
So that's why when we said, um, retirement is just Cindy's, because
Yep.
we pay for Cindy's benefits, but we just wanna make sure the community knows.
Yep. That's strictly, that's strictly just Cindy. So it's just, the other ones are pretty self-explanatory. The rental one, like I said, I'd have to look at it, but I'm pretty sure this is our last year. And for whatever reason, that expires in November from the way the rental agreement goes, so. We're all paid for this year, but I'm not sure how that negotiations will go in the future on what they want. It was a five-year, it was a five-year deal that we signed the last time that we did it.
When we do these rentals, don't we, uh, the only words I can come up with are RFP that?
Um, well, I guess if...
It's not just automatic. We should, because we rent space. So, what if there's another, uh, property that'll rent the space at much lower rate? Or just a lower rate?
Yeah. I, I guess I don't know if I'd call it a RFP, but you could always look into other options. Cause the USDA building is owned by the Bula GDA and, uh, a couple of years ago or whatever it was, they were looking at all their properties and adjusted it, but that doesn't mean you're, you know, locked into that place.
Right.
If, if you wanna a different location, I mean, obviously, then you gotta move everything.
Uh, not the location, it's, uh, the dollars, you know, that we don't just, if it's, if there's a, uh, proprietor that'll, I don't care.
Well, especially since we have a few different office locations, you know, superintendent's and a few others, we could maybe consolidate something to somewhere, so you're not paying rent on multiple properties for someone to be in an office once a month or something. You have to have a location, but it may be better to...
So when do you want us to, okay?
Well, you gotta look at the other side of it too. I guess I'll interject a little bit. Dollars is a big part of it, but you have to look at location and convenience to the public. And that's one nice thing about the facility that we have, being with the other two agencies that are in that office. It is very convenient for the agriculture's producers to come to one location and basically be able to do business with me and with their farm service agency and the natural resource conservation services.
Agreed.
So, not gonna disagree with that, Greg, but if, uh, on the place you're in now, let's say that you're paying about twelve hundred dollars a month rent for your, I don't know, base in square foot or what?
Yeah, they go by, I believe it's by square footage, but it would, it equates to about twelve hundred dollars a month, yes.
Right. So if that rent goes up to eighteen hundred and there's another place that'll give us the same square footage for a thousand, I mean, we gotta look at that.
Right.
I mean, I understand.
With the discretion that you have, with the discretion, of course, that you have to meet all the crazy ACH rules too.
I was just gonna comment on that, yeah.
So, yeah, but it's, but it's, it's a, it's a possibility, yes.
Right. So, I just wanna put that out there.
Interesting. Expensive, like moving an agency as well is extremely expensive, especially if you have a state agency type.
I mean, it's, it, it, I'm not saying it shouldn't be explored, but we need to, we need to consider all that stuff, what's available and possibility and all that good stuff.
And you say that contract's up?
I believe it's up in November.
Twenty-five.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So you have a little bit to start.
Yeah, I believe it's November of twenty twenty-five. I can check on that for sure.
Okay, then, yeah. Okay, we can, yeah, that part is not up for discussion until next year, basically.
Right.
Until twenty twenty-five.
Right.
Don't cover that then.
But we're, we're speaking generally. It's not necessarily that we want the extension to move, but if we have a bunch of other locations, like Jamie said, that are just there once or twice a month, if we could consolidate or, you know, eliminate one because we consolidated, then it might be worth looking into.
Right.
But I don't have any other questions on the extension?
Oh, anybody else have any questions?
So the office? Which two here are fifty-fifty with the state administrative?
One seventy and one seventy-one are fifty-fifty with the state on salary. The state covers all benefits for Meta and I.
Okay.
So what you're seeing on one, line item one seventy and one seventy-one is your half. Basically, half of Meta's a nice salary.
So, if we increase that to thirty-four eight, is the state automatically increased there's the thirty-four eight?
Yes.
Okay. Boy, that was a short answer.
That thirty-four eight comes, that thirty-four eight hundred on mine, I'm line one seventy. That thirty-four eight hundred comes direct, directly from Jim Gray that signed off on it, my district supervisor. That's his exact number that he told me to put in there. It's not a number that I came up with. That's his, that's his number.
If it's thirty-four, I mean, my question was if it's fifty-fifty, if, if we were to change that state to thirty-five eight, are they gonna okay the thirty-five with the state?
You have the authority to do that.
Okay.
You can go above that number. This is the minimum.
I didn't wanna go below it. I wanted to go above it.
You can go above it. If you feel you wanna go above it, I am not gonna argue that point.
I, I know that. I didn't wanna use like thirty-three eight and...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah. Okay then, thank you so much.
Thanks, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
Jump right into landfill. Has anybody got anything they wanna, anything else on the county extension? Okay.
Candy. Um, is it exactly what you gave me? Okay, cause, um, I also, as per request from Jamie, I did put all the benefits, wages, are put into the general fund. And then I did add just a couple of numbers.
This is just preliminary, so not really the one thing we just would discuss here, so to speak, is if we wanted to change what he's proposing at the end.
Life insurance. Life insurance is like twenty bucks.
And not even that, because this is more about informational meetings, so if they, you can ask them questions about this, then in the end, when we get to like the final budget, then we can make changes. Basically, it's not solid until the very end. I mean, we, we can make changes later.
I've gone through it twice now. She said wages and benefits. Retirement, college. Yes.
Oh, Paul Chatterley.
Yep, this is our time.
Do I have mine in order here? Budget worksheet, general fund. OBJ, mine says?
Yeah, yeah, landfill's considering enterprise fund.
I know, but I'm saying they're different.
This is not...
They're, uh, almost a month different when we printed to, this one's July one, the one we have.
Yeah, I'm just showing you what, from, starting July first. That's half of the year we went through and what I used on this year is what I gave you.
Okay, Candy, landfill. We're already behind on our, because of us.
Okay.
Thank you for coming in, Candy. I needed help getting my paperwork in order here, and then I'm still not in order. We'll just go through your, I guess for now, we'll just do as Craig did, other salaries.
Which page are we gonna go off of? Because the one Candy just gave us and the one in the packet third.
They're not the same?
I just gave you the, I just gave you the monthly report. And that's year-to-date what I've done so far.
Okay.
And then you can see the percentage of what's used in last year's budget.
Yeah.
That's, I just gave that for information.
Okay. Okay, and just so you know, Jamie requested that the wages and benefits be paid by the general fund, so that's why she did fill them out, and I put all of that into the general fund.
Okay.
And I think I gave you a copy of, with your... And it would've showed the wages and, um, retirement and stuff for, for landfill. Here it is. You guys didn't get this?
I don't, I feel like I've seen that.
Okay, so I wanna give you a copy of this, so you're looking at what the request came in from Jamie.
So now...
But the health insurance, I did leave that in hers, so when we go through that, we'll have to add.
So now I've got three documents in front of me for the landfill. I've got the sheet that was the proposed buzzer, budget from the auditor. Then I got Candy's, and then I got Jamie's request, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Wow, I'm not, it's gonna be difficult.
This is what she's standing at right now.
Okay.
For this year's budget.
Yeah, July first, so this is where her budget is sitting right now. And this is what she had in her.
Right, so I take other salaries. Oh, that's, month-to-date expenditures is fifty-five, sixty-six, eighty-eight. Under other salaries. Nope, not there.
This is...
I wanna see if I can compare the, if I can compare this to this at all. Cause if I take the fifty-five, sixty-six, eighty-eight times twelve, I get sixty-six, eight hundred approximately.
Okay, here's our twenty-four budget. That's what she's looking at right now.
Okay.
If you got thirty-three, sixty-one with her, thirty-six, two twenty-four, that's what she got.
Here, there's a twenty-four budget.
Salaries, that's what that is.
And that's twenty-four budget right here. These numbers should match.
Okay.
So in other words, our budget's gonna look on the left, on the landfill, on the general fund.
Right.
Correct.
So this colored sheet I sent you, the total of what you requested would've been, well, two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand nine-hundred-and-two dollars and fifty-two cents. That's what I put. But we're just looking.
Right, and I don't know if it's possible, but that would be something that would significantly help the landfill. Or like the other, some other options is like McKenzie County, cause they're a county landfill just like us. You know, they pay for the bigger expenses, so say her, out of the general fund. So say her loader goes down and it's a twenty thousand dollar bill. Instead of that coming out of the landfill expenses, it comes out of the general fund. That was another way that they are helping their landfill without offsetting fees for the landfill.
Part of the conversation we had too was with landfill wages coming out of there, that the, um, the enterprise fund would be able to sustain some of those other increases in like, uh, getting the dirt and all the other stuff that we needed.
Yeah, and for the operational fund for day-to-day stuff.
Right.
And be able to put more money aside in those other accounts.
Yeah, and we've, we've operated this as a enterprise fund for years and that we've gotten this far without doing this is actually pretty impressive. I've kinda had... I've kind of had conversations with the Daco personnel too. And this works with McKenzie County, so it's nothing that nobody else is doing.
As an enterprise fund, but we can still pay the, either pay the salaries or pay the big bills or or both or whatever we need to do, it's not. I know in years past, they made them basically take a loan and pay back with interest, and that wasn't really the right thing to do either.
I just want to try and wrap my head around the whole landfill. We, with central code wise, I, we have to provide some type of garbage disposal. And if if we um take money out of the general landfill for the too many words, if we take money out of the general fund for the landfill, which, that's fine. My only thought is our land, if if our landfill were only to take Mercer County residents' garbage. I don't like to have our landfill budget set and we're given a bargain to entities outside of Mercer County to bring garbage in. I don't have a problem if, you know, for Mercer County residents, if in other words, if the expenses come to where we need fifty dollars a ton to cover all the expenses for the landfill, then that's what we should be charging, rather than say thirty dollars a ton. And we take monies out of our general fund to pay for expenses at the landfill. And then we have entities outside the county bringing their garbage here because we're at thirty, thirty dollars a ton. I don't know if I said thirty cents or what I said, but I'm at thirty dollars a ton.
I don't disagree, Jean. But we, Candy and I have talked about this before, like, you know, what if we looked at out of county residents? But how do you tell who's in county and who's out of, because a lot of Oliver County residents have a Hazen-Bula address? But I can see like the Newtown facilities that we're bringing or Halliday, that you know that entity is out of county, maybe it needs to be higher. I just, I'm not sure for our local residents, how you tell who's in county and who's out of.
Well, I don't mean to step on Oliver County toes.
So my, my question was.
But, I, you know what I'm getting at, we could have, if our rates get low enough, we could end up with garbage from quite a distance. And because it, because of the, I mean, getting a bargain.
So where do.
So just to keep that in mind, as a thought.
When we.
I think I would love.
Funding for this dirt and and everything else that we put together. We're we're paying for that out of state funds or are we paying that out of enterprise funds?
Enterprise.
Our general funds.
Enterprise.
Enterprise.
Enterprise funds, yeah.
So I guess like right now, we're talking about expenditures. We should probably focus on that, and then when we get to the time when we're talking about revenues. That'd be the time to offset, but.
So right now on my one fourteen, now let's see, there's one fourteen on what we just got handed and one fourteen on what the auditor handed us. Outstanding month-to-date appropriations. So what we don't, we don't have a twenty-twenty-five number, do we?
Well, on line one fourteen.
Okay, so I gave you copies, so when I went through and it was what went into the general fund was wages, salaries, social security and retirement. I added in life insurance, that's forty dollars. Worker's comp is seven thousand.
Right, but we don't have that.
Was added in forty-four oh three oh. And no, you're not gonna have the totals here because you're supposed to just.
Oh, yeah, that's what we have. So other salaries, what's the twenty-twenty-five request?
With the dollar fifteen across the board, this will be the wages. But then the total with social security.
But that's for.
This is what it'll cost for her wages, her social security and her retirement.
So that's, that's line, that's one fourteen, one forty-six, two twelve and two twenty-one?
Yes.
What about two thirty-two?
Two thirty-two.
And two thirty-three?
No, two thirty-three is life insurance, that's forty dollars. Two forty-one, worker's comp, that's seven thousand. Forty dollars. And then the only other one was down at health insurance, three twenty-four. For the, their side good is forty-four thousand, thirty dollars. So that was the only three items that were added to this budget, so the total number for the whole budget on the second page came to two hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty.
This came to one more time, the bar.
Two hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty.
Say that again?
No. How, this was your budget from this whole page, just total. And but that's also included, your health insurance was forty-four thousand thirty dollars. Seven thousand for the worker's comp and forty dollars for life insurance if you didn't have those numbers. So the total is two hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty.
That's the total budget?
For her right now, if you don't include any salaries.
Okay, but if you put, if you put what was on there for salaries, what do you figured out, how much is it then?
Sorry. Asking my other commissioners here, what what was last year's budget amount?
Six hundred and seven and six hundred and seven thousand one hundred and fifty-two.
That's what I see.
Appropriations on two thousand fourteen. But on that bigger amount also, that was added on because we put the hundred and, what was it, hundred and sixty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-five for the um, our project that we're doing, the capping project.
Right.
So that's why that, and that was actually on there for two years.
I can add two hundred thousand to two hundred and sixty-four, and I still get four sixty-four, and last year was six hundred and seven thousand, there's quite a discrepancy here.
Because of the capping project. And this year with, if you put salaries and everything in there, I've got four hundred and ninety-six thousand eight hundred and seventeen. The capping project is why we had to put that extra money in there last year. And that's what.
You just.
Carmen, where'd you get the two sixty-four from?
Okay, the two, oh, I added all the, everything she had written in here already, and then I added the health insurance. The forty-four thousand thirty dollars, she didn't have that number, and also the worker's comp, seven thousand. And then her life insurance is forty dollars.
Okay, so that's where you add, you add those three numbers to the one forty-three, one fourteen, and that's where you've got two sixty-four.
Two sixty-four, nine fifty.
And the wages, two thirty-one, nine oh two fifty-two to come up, four ninety-six, eight seventeen.
That's, yep, that's what I.
That was what what her budget was, but without the capping project.
Right, because.
Okay, it was four hundred and what?
Uh, four hundred and ninety-six thousand eight hundred and seventeen.
Oh, you're not adding, I heard you say, uh-huh.
So what what projects do you got this year? About fifty thousand? Is that just normal, um, it's on line three eighty-eight?
That's payment to contractors, well, that payment to contractors, when I have somebody come and haul dirt, or two, I can put, um, if Butler comes works on mine machines. Then the parts, parts can go under parts and labor, and then their labor could go underneath.
Okay.
Underneath that also.
But you don't have any like capping projects or nothing, no, so that's just a routine year?
No. Just a capping one. It hasn't, yeah, it hasn't, it's not completed yet, they have not come yet.
But we're not.
We're looking at the budget.
We're looking at the next year's, yes, there isn't.
So that's why it's going down from six oh seven down to four ninety-six is what it becomes.
Yeah.
To our gene and that.
Well, I'm just trying to get the numbers even close to. Now we went from two sixty-four to four ninety-six. And it was six oh seven, so we're at a hundred and ten difference, and you say that's a capping project.
We got a hundred and thirty thousand less because there's no capping project.
But we still have money going into the I don't even know what it's called.
Operational fund?
No, we, if if we close our landfill.
Closer fund, that money has got to come out of there every year. And we raised that on here, it's raised, we had eight thousand. I put down eighty-six because I, that goes with um, interest or whatever. But and that, then that's money in an account, which I don't have that, I don't have enough to date one with me on how much money's in there, but that's calculated.
But where's it come out of? Is that on this here?
It comes, so it comes out of the payment of phase closure on nine seventeen.
Line nine seventeen.
And that's automatic every year that capital come out of there.
Thank you. I see it now. Thank you. Thank you, that's what I was looking for, where is it on this?
And on here, you'll see landfill to operational closure, thirty thousand, and then we got landfill to landfill closure cost, that's eighty thousand six hundred.
I see him now, thank you, that's, I wanted to make sure they were.
And like with that operational closure, trying to build that up because that actually, that'll cover like, say we get heavy rains or something and it washes out the capping that's been done. That has to get repaired again, so that money that's there in that account compared to the um phase closure account, we can use that money to fix that stuff. If you have major washouts or, we already changed a well, so we don't, that won't have to be done for years, we're gonna close a well and put another one into the north, but that's dumb. But that's what that money is for, and it it needs to just get built up for projects. And like part of the inertial have to in the next few years, part of that will have a part closure done to that, but that'll be cheaper than the MSW area.
Okay, where's, where's the landfill here approximately?
Uh, let's look.
Oh, in the back, I got it.
What page you got it on?
Seventy-two, seventy-one and seventy-two.
Landfill's on seventy-two.
So that number here, you got appropriation two sixty-four, that's gonna change quite a bit.
Carmen, I'm still not understanding why you're getting the two sixty-four, because we get one ninety-four, under ninety-four thousand, so. Where's the.
And you added in the health insurance?
Yep, so I did the, we did, we both did the forty, the seven thousand, forty-four thousand. Added it to the one forty-three, and that comes up to one ninety-four. So we're still not understanding.
I just added these, I didn't add, this is, this is the twenty-four budget, this is what she's, so I added every number she wrote in here. Do that.
So we don't need the one forty-three?
Yeah.
You don't, that's the other budget, we're looking at only this, so add these numbers on both pages. We were trying to stay out.
Trying to simplify.
Parts and towing, is that a hundred, how much is parts and towing, fifteen thousand or?
Yeah, fifteen thousand.
Okay, and then the health insurance, I had, I just, yeah, that's it, zero.
So this is the total that we got over here, and that's where it got.
Yes, yes, fifteen, fifteen thousand. Because like when I did that cylinder on the loader, that bigger cylinder, that money came out of that four-ten. And like if you were to have to take a machine up and physically take it to Bismarck to have it worked on, that money would come out of that four-ten also.
So, does everybody have four ninety-six, eight seventeen as a budget total? Well, we got a, at the end here, I want to make sure everyone's got the same numbers.
Say that again, four ninety-six?
Four ninety-six, eight seventeen, point fifty-two if you want to go with that, but we'll just say four ninety-six, eight seventeen. I don't even know where I got the point fifty-two from. And then um and last year's budget was six oh seven, one fifty-two. So this year's budget would be a hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars less.
Yes, because there wasn't money put, because we're not doing a major project.
Okay.
Is the reason for the bigger difference. And the only thing that really changed on the budget was the tires, I added a thousand dollars to the tires because there's a chance that I'm gonna need new tires to put on the landfill pickup.
Okay, anybody got any more questions?
I'm good.
So this sheet on page seventy-one, that two six four is actually gonna change to four, whatever, four ninety-six.
Well, depending on where we put the two thirty-one, nine oh two.
Understood, but as of right now.
You can leave it there for now, yeah.
But gotta keep that in mind. Where we get to the, by the time we get to the end, so you have to get, so you don't forget that, I'm gonna write it on my two.
This is proposed, and this is what the total is.
Okay, any other questions? I think we are good with that for now.
The only other question I have for you guys is, as of still today, on our insurance here that is being paid by you guys anyways, on the health insurance, it's still being taken out of my budget.
Yep, because you're a separate entity.
So technically, we're not getting it.
Well, your entity is paying for it.
It should be going back into their account, out of the general fund, or out of that health insurance fund. So if it comes out, it should be going back in.
Twenty percent of it is coming out of the gen, the rest of it, the the landfill pays for. So that individuals like Candy doesn't have to pay her portion, her ten percent that we normally did pay in. Because she isn't part of the general fund, she's a separate entity, just like the county road, they have to pay their, they pay all their health insurance and stuff for that. And that's what we did here, twenty percent, because that's what you guys asked for, is actually coming out of the general fund, those extra funds, twenty percent, the rest of it, eighty percent.
Why is nothing coming out of the health insurance fund then?
Yeah, that's what the twenty per.
The twenty percent comes out.
Comes out of the health insurance fund.
Okay, you said general fund, so that's why.
Yeah, sort of that.
Okay.
Health and fund. Yeah, that was their extra. But because she's an entity, she does pay for that, uh, landfill pays for that. Not the general fund, I didn't put that on the general fund, county road department, they mill for there. The only thing the general fund covers for health insurance, the eighty percent, is everything under the general fund. So we've got the extension service pays for theirs. So otherwise.
I believe when we talked to Glenn about this, that was different, like, yes, we need to take it out of her account, but then it should be a transfer back in from that health insurance fund for the road department too.
Uh, right, when we went through that, she was taking it all out, what we did was you had to take only. you had to take only eighty percent.
Because then there's no, I mean, that would make sense why our health insurance fund's not moving anywhere, because we're not taking out what needs to come out of there.
Right. But um, well, it moved a little, but not as much as you thought. So, but here's the thing, that health insurance only pays that extra ten, now this year we're looking at twenty percent. And that, but the rest of it has to be paid by the entity. Just like the county road, they, they mill for it, the general fund mills for the eighty percent. And that's what covers the employees.
The.
The highway department.
In the.
It's mills, so why aren't, why would it come out of theirs? It should technically only be coming out of mine the way you just said that.
So.
Right, yours is coming out just like the county road mills for it, but see, you have fees. You have fees, you aren't part of.
Whether, whether it's being milled for or not, in the road department, they got a, you're budgeting for that eighty percent out of the road department, and twenty percent comes from the health fund because of their budget. Same with this enterprise fund. It's handled the same way, the eighty percent comes out of the their budget, and the twenty percent comes out of the um, health insurance fund. And the rest of the county comes out of the general fund, but still.
Because they're under the general fund.
Right, comes out of the general fund, but twenty percent of that comes out of the health insurance fund also. So we'd see the same in the, basically in the general fund, which is almost confusing because.
It's just like when they give you a raise, Candy, it comes out of your budget, I mean, your money's that you make.
Yeah, I know that, I know that part.
And that's the same with the health insurance.
But like every other employee or entity for Mercer County is coming out of the general fund, just like the highway department.
No, the highway department mills for it.
I'm not going to disagree.
They have it in their budget, that amount.
And you people don't? Nobody else?
We are general fund, we are general fund, sheriff's office, treasurer, auditor, everybody here is general fund, and we mill in the general fund for those employees.
Yeah, and doesn't highway department mill for them?
Mills separately in a different mill, not the general fund mill.
The highway department's got uh, the county levy, county road levy and the unorganized.
Oh, they have other entities giving them money.
Well, yep, they got it.
So that's what they're thinking.
But we're still going to show the expense.
Yeah.
Okay, that's basically what this is.
Yeah.
So the twenty percent though is of hers is coming out of the health, she just isn't charged that twenty percent, and that's what we had to figure out, it was a hundred, and then we figured it out, so now the only charge that the landfill gets for your amount is the eighty percent, and then the twenty percent comes out of the health insurance.
And we, we corrected that this year for, like gave her monies back.
Through the, all the months we took, we gave them back.
Okay.
So then, to try and follow Candy's question and request, so the forty-four thousand, is that the eighty percent?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I would have to pay every, or that comes in the budget, or that's what I'd have to pay next year in the budget.
Yep.
Forty-four thousand for the insurance.
Yeah. Unless the commission would decide to let that, you know, it's a commission's budget, but that is the way.
Which is still in, which is still in a way. I'm not an accountant, and I wouldn't know how to mathematically do this, but technically, that still doesn't show what your actual expense would be. To, to truly do it, it should be billed at a hundred percent, even though the twenty percent comes back. Because in the end, I look at, I would look at the total here and then go, well, the total to run your landfill is, you know, whatever, five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Well, no, because the county's kicking in another thirty thousand on this twenty percent, or, so actually, it costs us five hundred and thirty thousand to run the landfill, not five hundred, you go. So the numbers, it, it.
Yeah, I get that.
I don't agree with the numbers completely, but yeah, that's the way we're working it. So we, we got to try and show, otherwise, we wouldn't even have these line items, we'd just say, okay, costs this much, well this, there'd just be one general fund, and everything would come out of it. But we need to account, where's it coming, what, what are the expenses, what are the actual expenses?
Okay, and it wasn't twenty percent, we're looking at eight percent, the health fund, ninety-two percent, the county.
Yeah.
And that's why yours did go up, it's because it's ninety-two percent.
Instead of nine.
And the proposed.
Yeah.
Ninety, ten.
Eighty, twenty, yeah, you guys had talked about it, it's eight percent the health fund, and we're slowly.
Yeah. Next year, this year's percentage is going to, is different than what next year's proposed percentage is.
Yep.
So, add that into your confusion.
No, you got me all confused, I want to ask you a question.
Green Ford is another one that mills their own county agent.
The forty-four thousand three hundred is the eighty percent. Where is the twenty percent?
It's the ninety-two percent.
Or ninety-two percent.
Right, the eight percent is what comes out of that health. So that in your account is only the ninety-two.
The ninety-two percent is a total of forty-four thousand three hundred.
Yes.
All right, that makes sense.
Which, once again.
You were looking at three different, but we're only looking at two then.
Okay. Any other questions for Candy? At this rate, we're going to be here.
Yeah.
A long time. Yep. Any other questions?
So you guys are going to make a decision later on, on whether like we get part of a mill levy, or if it's got to go to a vote with, on the ballot or whatever for, like are wages being covered because we're Mercer County employees, that's what I would like to know. That's the only reason I'm thinking the wages, so we're more, we could be more competitive with everybody else, because we're Mercer County employees, not, and, nothing to do with the enterprise, just the employees.
That's, that's what Jamie's proposal is, is that we contribute some funds from the general fund so that your wages are consistent with the rest of the county employees.
Yeah.
And not be so worried about exactly what is generated by your fees.
That could go more toward the operation or of your enterprise as it goes.
Right.
Employee salaries, benefits.
This is what we proposed in the general fund, this is what it would look like before, if we didn't, when do we decide, the preliminary funds, when do we decide that? That's her question too, when, when do we decide that?
We either decided at the preliminary, to leave it in that way, or we decided at the final.
That's what it looks like, it's either her budget's going to look at four ninety-six, or else it's going to look like two sixty-four.
Correct.
Correct.
So when that'll be done later.
Yeah.
Next step.
The next step.
Right now, we're accounting for all the numbers.
Yeah.
And understanding her situation.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, that's, I, I didn't know what it would look like, it was just something, ta, after talking with McKenzie County, it was something to look into.
Okay. Any other questions for Candy? Candy got any other questions?
I don't think so at this time.
Okay. Next, we're going to have the sheriff, but we're going to, we're going to take a five-minute recess.
You got my emails, does it make sense, you guys?
It's.
Because we're not getting the funds.
I do.
Okay. Oh, oh, yes, and that is my whole goal.
I, I totally like it.
No, no question, please ask, it's.
Because it makes sense.
The more we understand the.
Yeah, because it all comes out of like.
Okay, I'll, I'll, tell them I'll work on it.
Good, just call.
Yeah, no, the Indian reservation's going to have to help us with that, it's one of the things where.
I'm doing.
So did you guys? This is what I sent you.
Yes, I did. Yes, I, I made a copy for each of the commissioners.
Yeah, can we get a copy of that?
Copy. Like a all of our budget numbers?
Yeah, and then what you got.
Well, actually. I don't know what Jane's.
Because he didn't make a copy when he turned our budget sheet on.
Oh my gosh, okay, I did make a copy for you guys. Oh, because I was wondering about that. Okay, come on, I got these copies here. So this is the order I got them in, and then I just replaced them, okay, yay, I got them in.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to. You just took those two payments off?
Because we don't make them.
Only can we get them on. And the CO to pay over.
Get the floor.
It makes a lot of sense.
I remember hearing about that.
What are we running here? Did you happen this thing?
That's where the landfill takes. I've never been talking about it.
Okay, I'm not giving everybody the blue books, they are just getting stupid. I think it's very confusing, so I'm trying to.
Sure.
Make it better.
Yeah, I'll give them a call too after. Yeah, because that was, that was on the.
Cat butter. A cat.
Cat?
They just left him there when he took.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll give them a call.
Okay.
I, I got, I have no concerns with it, except there may not be an exit. That we can. I, I've seen that before, as, you know.
Just, you guys know I believe.
Someone who helps or anything.
Yeah, hopefully one of our reservations can help.
Yeah.
Okay, not this one? Or wait, where am I at?
This is all yours, all I did is add one page from the sheriff's office.
What did I do with the sheriff's, oh, I haven't, earlier.
There, we can reconvene. Had to take, well, the pharmacy note opened until eight-thirty. So I had my drugs delivered.
Glad you're telling that to the sheriff.
He can do what he needs to do, I don't care. Probably make my day a little easier if he escorted me out of here.
Yeah, are we reconvened, Jean?
We are reconvened.
Okay, I, before Terry starts, just to kind of help probably move this process along a little bit, but I think what we should look at is all of their requests, if we have specific questions on certain items, that's great, but I want to see at the end, what all the requests do to our total budget, and then try not to do so much in between, let's get through this, and then when we get to the end, then if we're over, say, our sixty mil on the general, then that's where we got to look to make changes, but at least we got the specifics.
And I don't think there'll be any other major request differences, the landfill was a big.
Right.
Change, otherwise I don't see any of the other departments having significant.
Just the two, two with the wages that's coming up yet, or how do we do that? Just look at it, Alex got the proposal.
Yeah.
Okay, so you put the proposed in then?
Yes.
The twenty-five we were always talking about.
Yes.
Here.
Okay, so then we just. What I, what I need is frugally represented in my budget request.
Thank you.
So what we talked about is already in.
Yes.
So at the end of the day, then we'll check.
Yes, what I did was I took uh, July's numbers, which could be half. And then I had, you know, you have to do some magic crystal ball reading as to what it would be, but then I doubled that for the year, and then just the changes that I made, you know, and of course, I'm not requesting the vehicles that I requested last year.
But then we added the changes with the wages.
Yes, but my changes are reflected in my request.
Okay, then we don't have to look at it, I want to ask any more questions other than.
Now, your wage, you told me you just did the dollar fifty.
Yes, but.
I didn't get any other.
No, I, I referred that, I refer back to our human resource officer with that, because I'd like my staff to see, my entire staff to see the dollar fifty, but then if we were making the changes that, you know, on our, on our starting amount, when I'm starting new correctional officers, adding deputies, I have a few people I have to move, and she was going to get the numbers to you for the box.
I hadn't got, I didn't get anything. So what I'm looking at here is, and what I put in this budget for them to look at was your wages with the dollar, the increase. So the total wages, along with everything you had put in your budget, I got a total of two million, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, two hundred, two million, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Two million, seven sixty-six, nine what?
Sixty-eight.
Then, I, what I would do is ask that if there is a bump out then, that for now, for the preliminary budget, that I would ask the commission to write in an extra, what that bump would be, an extra amount, that we could do that if we, if you guys voted to do that, so I could change the numbers and make my.
Okay, I.
Finally, my.
Because what, I was.
Numbers work.
I don't have the exact number, but we were between seventy, I would go at seventy-five.
Seventy-five would cover it.
Seventy-five hundred.
And then we could read that down and read them if the commission decided not to do it.
So that'll end up your, your, your total number at the bottom is going to look a little bigger.
Yeah, we just add that to it, and, can you give the initial number again? Okay, the initial number was two million, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. That's everything, okay, so then we want to add seventy-five thousand per bump.
Do we have the number that that was last year?
Yes, we do.
Just, just looking at the percentage.
Okay, so last year, estimated, okay, the actual, we spent, okay, so well, for twenty twenty-four, you should have your, it should be on your sheet.
It's.
For what?
Two million, six ninety-six, oh eighteen.
Twenty-four budgeted was. Two million, six hundred and ninety-six thousand, eighteen.
Yeah.
Two, six.
That was the, that's your twenty-four budget.
Yeah, that's the twenty-four. Is that what you were, wasn't that what you were asking?
Some, it, it looks like I came up with around seventy thousand.
Yeah.
So you can see with core inflation, what was that this year, like eight percent core inflation, you can see, I'm well, I'm not asking for anything other than what I need, projecting inflation hopefully lets up, otherwise we'll all have trouble here in the future, but with that, I think I'm in the ballpark.
Okay, so that one, okay. Okay, so then I got two million, eight forty-one, nine sixty-eight, and that's what I got.
Two million, eight forty-one, nine sixty-eight?
Yes.
Proposed that.
Calculator died, so I'm going to use my phone.
And that includes the seventy-five thousand for an additional salary increase?
Correct.
Correct?
Yep.
Correct.
Okay.
Much good change.
Yeah, that's what I mean, we need to play credit, so we need to.
That would be the high amount.
We need to get to the bottom end of this. We need to get to the bottom end of this.
And the salary increase you're looking for, is it correctional and the deputies, or is it everybody across the board?
It's not the top, not the bottom, the middle. If I'm starting, you know, I, I hate to bring in a correctional officer that's, and immediately start them getting paid the same as I've had someone here for three years, four years.
Okay.
Okay, salaries and wages, that can be another discussion. So for now, that gets us right down to travel and per diem, three forty-one there. Line item three forty-one, fifteen hundred instead of sixteen, fif-
Fifteen, sixteen thousand, that's what he's got written in there?
Yeah, but on the one we were just handed, it says fifteen hundred. That's what the fifteen hundred.
This is for diem, I mean nine-one-one.
Oh, my word.
Different page, number two.
We'll get there, we'll get fifteen, it's just a little
All right. So, we're just looking at this now, correct? Everyone, keep me in line here.
Should save page thirty-three on top, top rate.
Okay, page thirty-three, thank you Travis. So sixteen thousand, twenty-seven hundred for telephone, twenty-one eight oh eight membership, two thousand, so all this is going to stay what we have right in front of us.
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna read them off.
And all of them are just double, your, your big changes, uh, like, uh, the, uh, you have a, a couple that would have changed.
Someone down, someone up, but they're all
But for instance, prisoner shoes and clothing, that, you've got a budget for even federal inmates, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, yeah. On the expense side.
Right, on the expense side, yep.
That's all in there.
Yep, but I mean, because if there, there's an increase, but
Sure.
we've got more federal inmates than we did a year ago.
Yes.
Okay.
And I have any more?
Okay.
Um, on the next page, Carmen, you have a note on here, what are they using for siren dispatch and radio expenses? And that was just a But we found where that's at, or whatever. Oh, absolutely, it's, um, in that special grant, sheriff's grant, public safety, actually, it should be the next budget after these two pages, seventh page seventy-two is your next one after thirty-four. It's the third page in, okay, that's where we have the siren radio. For the dispatch, it's siren radio system.
Well, page seventy
You mean forty-two?
Forty-two, you mean? No. Seventy-two is the second page for us, and it's the, like, drug grant for for sheriffs and
Oh, sorry, yeah, definitely, she's sorry.
Yeah.
But yeah, the next one after the sheriff, it's, yep, public safety, five, twenty-one, twenty-nine. And he's requesting fifty thousand.
Okay, and that, that, that is
Maintain the
Yes.
Siren dispatch radio system.
And that's a new radio system.
Add it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, there is some changes you'll see on one of the line items for radio equipment, I'm asking for that recorder that we may or may not need yet to be compatible with siren, and a base station, and one repeater. You know, and them are three big items, but we, we've seen that this year, we, we have something comes up and we need to replace something, we should have the money.
For what you mean for new, the radio repairs that we're expecting through EIC, what did it?
Siren.
We're still, we're still gonna have to find a fix to get us over to the new, sooner or later, we're gonna have to change that IP, internet phone system. So I'm looking for the fix, and, and when we got the patch and the fix, we're gonna need that equipment. And that's, you know, that's Yeah, three big items. A repeater, and a base radio, we've had that happen before, if our power gets hit by lightning, and smoke comes out of the dispatch center, we should have money to fix that. If we don't use it, it turns and armed up. I think we have room to budget that in this year, and I did that.
We're proposing fifty thousand to cover the radio stuff that we're looking
That's such a trick.
Anticipating.
Put that forty, thirty, twenty. We should have one that surrounds seventy-five thousand, radio, radio equipment.
The request number twenty-five is because of a radio system that
But we've only said We still got that budgeted.
Okay, any other specific questions?
You wanna move to
So that'll cover it. And that was at four sixty-one on my sheet, mine is page thirty-four, where some of that other equipment is budgeted in, you'll see that, that's why it off. And it was high last year, but that money's still in there because we planned on buying some portables with that.
A line item four sixty-one?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I feel like on that, on page thirty-four, you had some that went up, but some that went down, so I feel like it is a wash.
Yep, that's a year to year. That's again, reading the crystal ball.
And, and just so you know, and I know you guys will have it in your blue book, but revenues for, um, federal housing, well, in twenty-three, we collected three hundred and eighty thousand, eighty dollars for federal housing only, and then we're estimating, we estimate low, but we're estimating three hundred thousand, minimum.
And that'll be, that will be low.
That's, okay, do you see any changes, like it's
I do, uh, we're, we're in the process, we're gonna raise our rates. I'm thinking, McKenzie County is charging a hundred and five dollars a day, I don't know why, to the federal, for federal inmates and for DOCR inmates. I don't know why that we should stay down at eighty-two. Are their costs, and because they're, where they're at should be no more higher or lower than mine. So we're looking at raising our rates, I'm in discussions with other sheriffs in the area, to a hundred dollars at least for them, that'd be a substantial increase, and that would cover the huge jump in inflation we've seen this year, so.
So we get to set those rates?
Well, we get one chance in three years.
Okay.
When we sign that, when we sign that inmate agreement with the feds, we get one chance in three years to adjust our rates, I plan on using that.
And if they're getting
Well, it's gonna be hard, you know, it's gonna be hard for them to argue that McKenzie County can, uh, I can do business cheaper than McKenzie County can. I don't, I don't see why that would be
And that's almost twenty percent.
Yes, and, and, and Southwest Regional, out of Dickinson, is charging a hundred and twenty dollars for non-contracted. So I, I think we would probably still be one of the better deals in the area at that, and we're closer to the federal courthouse than they are, so for them, that's, it makes more convenient, I, we plan on doing that as soon as we can, as soon as possible.
So since we got in twenty-three, end of twenty-three, three thousand, three hundred and eighty thousand, what's a good number for revenue? Would I up it to three eighty for sure, we'll get at least three eighty?
You could go four hundred, we're gonna, we're gonna, providing there's no emergencies, we're gonna be well over four hundred.
And that will help.
Yes, and for other contracts, I mean, I don't see any other, I don't see any revenue losses, we still have Oliver County, you know, with the ninety thousand for our contract for nine-one-one services, we still have our small communities, you know, we're, I'll be in budget talks, there, there's a coming up, whether we're gonna stay the same for providing leasing for Zap, Golden Valley and Stanton or not. I think there should probably, with inflation, we should probably look at making it fair to the rest of our community, our big cities that don't contract with us, and raising their rates somewhat, but keep it affordable for our local, small towns. So our revenues are gonna go up, they're not gonna go down.
You know, just
What I forecast.
If it helps any, I mean, if you want, for figuring sake, just what we had figured for Carmen, it's like, um, we, twenty, the twenty dollars is a hundred and thirty thousand, so if you were adding four hundred, we only added a hundred, but I mean, if you wanted, you want to be low rather than high, but
Right.
you, you would be at four thirty rather than four
Four fifty would even be a safe give, for next year.
Because we're not even figuring, projecting twenty, twenty, twenty-four numbers.
You can guarantee it, Jerry, because it does make a
Never a guarantee.
I never
But it'd be nice
If you borrow me your crystal ball, I guarantee it.
Right, Carmen, it'd be nice to
We'd go four hundred.
Four hundred.
Just four, four, I like that.
That's prudent.
It'd be nice, um
We can always go over.
Yes, over.
On our budget, we should try and get as accurate as we can, and not just pick numbers out of the sky, too. I mean, if, if we're gonna have a, a pretty precise number, we should go with that, because it'd be no different than trying to say, well, the sheriff's budget's only gonna be five hundred thousand, and the end is two million, well, that's not, we're not doing our true duties here, we gotta try and get close.
If you're looking at true duties, we do get an average of eighteen people at the twenty, uh, per month, and we did an average of that, and we took twenty dollars increase with a hundred and thirty thousand dollars more in the budget, that's where that number came from.
Right. Well, I'm saying, let's not go real low on
I'm just, I'm just telling you with the numbers that we came up with and we figured, that's all I know.
Okay, any other questions on page thirty-four, or you got anything else to point out, I know what steer vehicles are, and you've probably covered that three times already, but there's quite a difference there.
Yes, the only thing I was asking for, for vehicles would be, I'm, I'm trying to move, uh, our youth bureau worker, second one out of that, she's driving a older, uh, big four-wheel drive Ford Expedition. I want to put her in an all-wheel drive smaller vehicle, it don't have to be a place type vehicle, it'd be much more economical. On one end, I think we could put a lot more miles and run it a lot more years than that Expedition, I want to remove that Expedition and, and, and bring it back, and either for, you know, to use for a county vehicle like you guys had the Durmond or the Salo, and, and move that one out of my fleet.
No, I see you got new vehicle.
Number we came up with there was a used one, not a brand new one.
Yes, yeah, we were looking at maybe a Ford Escape, or a Honda CRV, or something like that to run real economical, and you can put a lot, a lot of miles on them, they're not hard miles with her, they're just driving back and forth, so.
Prisoner's medical care, there's that's out a number, that's just, we, it's hard to
It's very hard to determine where it's gonna be at, I, I think sixty thousand is a very safe number. Might be, you know, in the single digits, but I think sixty would cover the worst, one of the worst case situations. I think it, we could still go over that, but again, that, that's not figuring in the feds, that's just our local prisoners that that Momo is set aside for, if we have someone that's, we have to keep them incarcerated, and it's medical is running us, you know, thousands of dollars a week, we could meet that pretty easily, but I don't foresee that, it hasn't happened yet, but it could.
So, our federal
The federal
prisoners, we still have to figure that in our budget?
No, the feds pay for their medical care.
Right, they, oh, so that, we don't even pay it?
They pay it directly.
We don't even Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's not a revolving, one of them are revolving accounts like transports, stuff like that's revolving, we pay it, they pay us back.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on page thirty-four? Forty-two, on mine?
It's the coroner?
Obviously no questions.
Oh, the coroner is, um
Oh.
The question is worth six hundred dollars for transportation, that's yearly, or is that in, or is that a that's a total, that's a total for the year, and twelve and a six hundred?
Yeah.
Well, can I?
I think where that came from is, wasn't that transports from deceased personnel? From what we get charged from the ambulance or whoever down to the medical examiner's office.
Who is currently our coroner?
Doctor Casper.
Doctor Casper.
Okay.
And, and we're using him, so.
Any other? Okay, page sixty-five. Pretty much sixty-six.
You must need to do dive equipment?
Isn't that just expense so that you can use the monies under the dive?
Yes.
That just allows them the five thousand if they need it, because there's money donated that goes in there, that's nothing we know.
Do we have a separate?
Yeah, it's a separate
Call?
Twenty-one, twenty-three.
And how much is in there right now?
Oh, hold on, twenty-one, twenty-three, uh, right now, five hundred and fifty dollars.
Five hundred and fifty dollars?
Was put in there this year right now.
Oh, what's the total that's in there? Okay.
What it would show is that monthly statement you guys get? If you, uh, I just stop the same who runs on, so I don't miss anything, I'm gonna go grab it, that's one thing I did wrong with me. Then we can find a tool.
We can come back to that.
Oh, Travis is looking something up. Yeah, because that, that account is odds and ends we pay for, if we work in one, we use, and them are all volunteers, so if they need, we wreck something of theirs, or whatever, or they need, you know, or, or we need to get their regulator's check, or whatever, that, that money
Comes out of that fund.
That's where we pay for that.
I'm just curious how much is in that fund.
Yeah, if it's at ten thousand, then we probably don't need a budget for it, but
This is what I'm getting.
Yeah.
We got a huge amount in there, but there's fifty thousand in there.
If we end up diving
Actually, forty-two thousand, sixty-two. That's the sheriff's game and fish grant, twenty-one, twenty. That was shown as of the first of July.
There's forty-two thousand in there?
Okay.
Forty-two thousand in there right now?
Yep, that's what it's showing.
So that builds each year, that we're not using it?
I don't think last year you guys used it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it builds each year, right?
Yes, it does, but you did, like, this year, you had five hundred and fifty dollars put in there this year.
Yeah.
Last year, you ended with forty-one thousand.
Yeah, we're not, we're not spending anything out of there that we don't need, excuse me.
I'd say leave it in for now, but that might be a one that we could
If you plan on spending more out of there, though, you probably want to up that five thousand. Because that isn't part of our mill, that's just monies, so then you have an expense account that you won't go over on if you're gonna spend more money on here.
Okay. Seventy-three, page seventy-three.
That's just a revolving account. What we spend out of there, we get back from the
Right.
from the federal government. That's an in and out.
Yep, and like last year, and that's the thing, Jerry, if you don't put anything in there, it's gonna come out red at the end.
Yeah, it, it, it reflects my expenditures, not your guys' revenues.
Right.
As long as you guys know, I don't, I'm not afraid to write numbers, as long as you're not looking at me like, where the, where the money at?
Yeah.
It's there, it came back to you. I, i- if you guys want the number to be black at the end of the year, it don't, like I say, it don't concern me, as long as they know it.
It's not that you're willing to
It's easier for her to make her number, it's the way it is.
But, this doesn't, that, if you put a number on here, that doesn't affect the sheriff's budget at the end.
All it does is allow us an octable in the black, we, we know where to spend that money, but that money comes in from
But it goes into the general fund, it don't go back into that transport heavy fund.
Well, we pay out of the transport deputy.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but they, they see a red number at the end of the year. For my budget, it makes it look like I spent money I didn't have, which is not true, we just So we could put money in there to zero mine, to the
It would be more relevant.
Right. But it's not gonna
To, to the public, they don't see a, a red under at the end of the year.
It's not gonna change the total public safety number.
No, no, no mill for it.
Right.
But I
This is money paid in, and this account is twenty-one, thirty.
So, in my opinion, it wouldn't matter
No.
what we pay there.
I think it just makes more sense, because that's what we're expecting.
I don't want it to accidentally
Right now, the balance in that account is six thousand, twenty-two thousand.
We, we can just, we can just leave it, we understand it, we know it.
Yeah, so we're, we're, we're bringing in more than we're paying out for transports, for the federal government is what we're seeing.
Whatever, whatever the rest of the commissioners are comfortable with there.
Because that is a
I think we continue how we've been doing it, if we haven't put anything in there.
And we have in the past, you know, but
Okay. Page one oh two.
One oh two, okay, so this is the one where I gave you the change. You guys got that separate letter? Well, all we did is we took out those payments to NDACO payments to state treasure because now NDACO is taking care of that. And all we get back is what's due to county for our fees. So I took out that twelve thousand lines three eighty-two and line three eighty-four, take those amounts out. So then the total here is only seventy-one thousand. And this is the nine-one fund, so this is not the general fund, this is two-nine-one-one. So by doing that.
So that's seventy-one thousand on this page.
Yep.
Yes, but the nine-one fund is separate.
Okay. So other than that, no changes?
Nope.
Okay, I haven't even got the chance to look at these numbers. Anybody got any questions? Terry got any comments?
Nope.
All right. One oh three.
Oh, this is just the second page here, nine-one.
And you can see that, that, that reflects back to my overall sheriff's department or public safety budget. That, or the sheriff's department budget is the line items for, you know, your insurance and your wages and all that got zeroed, but we picked them up. Because that work is still being done, but we picked them up through the sheriff's department existing personnel.
One oh, page one oh, one zero four.
Okay, and that one is, um, yeah, I just gave all his budgets. This one we don't fill out, we don't use it. It was for that wireless and it got all put into the.
And one.
Actually, I'm gonna make sure we.
Delete that page.
We don't, yeah.
And what about one, one zero five?
One zero five, now that's the equipment fund. And right now in that, and I'm thinking what we should do is just transfer that equipment money back into your nine-one fund. Because it's just sitting.
What, twenty-nine thirteen?
Twenty-nine thirteen, yes.
How much is in twenty-nine thirteen?
Twenty-nine thirteen, right now it has a hundred and thirty-one thousand four hundred and one dollars.
And I wasn't aware of that amount and I didn't have plans for that.
I used to put it aside for equipment when we had to redo all the.
And I built that in now, already, earlier in the budget, so you guys could take that money too.
And then I'm gonna put it into your, uh, nine-one funds, because after your budget. Yeah, then you'd be able to see, because right now, okay, so I took minus your nine-one budget, there's like thirty-six thousand.
Yeah, because that equipment, I built that into radio equipment.
I was gonna say, do we have this money? This money's new to me.
Fifty, fifty thousand back house.
Yeah, I think that.
No, we add this to the nine-one, because that's a budget.
And we gotta be careful with nine-one ones, because they can only be spent.
Oh, this is our radios, not this?
Yeah, this is siren radios.
It can only be spent on certain items.
That's a hundred and thirty-one thousand.
Yeah.
Can only go to.
But if we move that into my other account, then I can take them other numbers and lower them that I was requesting from you. Because I, I can give you your money back, but we can't, if this money was received for nine-one, save for a tax surcharge and phones and stuff, it has to be spent specifically. I can't give you that back.
Where, where in your budget are you?
I, I budgeted that radio equipment, which I was asking from you guys. Yeah, we could bring that number down.
Seventy-two.
Because we're moving this one into it.
I was trying to find it, I was.
You got radio expense, siren dispatch all that?
No. No, I, I, the one thirty-one I have to use for nine-one, but the seventy, I'm asking for you for radio equipment, I wouldn't ask for that.
The fifty?
And I still have fifty more than I need. Can you see where I'm, what I'm saying, Carmen? Does that work for you?
All right, so, so under radios, under your sheriff's department, right? That's what you're looking at?
Nope.
I can use that money for, uh, my tower, my recorder, because that's all nine-one related and my base station. So them three items, I was budgeting seventy thousand for.
Okay.
And I still have enough, I have enough to cover that. I could drop that seventy thousand request from the commission is what it is.
So you just.
Radio.
And I still have fifty that will keep paying.
Page thirty-four, line item four sixty-one.
Yeah.
That's seventy thousand.
Yeah.
You could, you could, uh, take that out of your.
Request.
Twenty-one, twenty-nine thirteen.
If I'm getting that back through that money.
Okay, so I'm gonna zero that out.
Yeah.
And then we're gonna add seventy thousand to your nine-one budget.
Well, I need the whole.
In order to, but I mean, you need to add these funds into your nine-one so it'll reflect that. So let me go through, yeah, I have to move it to a different, okay. So then we wanna put, I wanna add to your nine-one budget. Radios. What page are we talking to then, Carmen?
Yes, we'll take it.
Page one oh two?
Because we have to spend it on the nine-one side, I see what you're saying.
And equipment.
Nine-one equipment.
Four, four, six.
Take the radios out of there.
So let's add seventy.
Well, I need the whole amount to turn that.
Seventy thousand.
Two, three, one.
To that one. So then you have sixty thousand in there, so then we're gonna have a hundred and thirty thousand.
Okay, where are you gonna? You're gonna take the seventy thousand off of, uh, line item four sixty-one. Where are you putting it in?
I don't need it.
Page one oh two, you're gonna put it into.
I need the one thirty-one that's already been saved.
So you're gonna add it to four, four forty-six?
Correct, yes, on page one oh two.
So that'll change to a hundred and thirty thousand?
Yeah.
Right.
And then?
But then there'll still be another.
Yeah, I don't wanna.
Carmen, there'll still be in that, out of that one thirty-one, there's still sixty-one thousand.
Still in that account.
Still in that account. That account, okay, so the equipment fund monies, I'm going to transfer into our nine-one account and then we won't be using that equipment fund anymore. So all those funds will be zeroed out, put into nine-one.
And, and everything that we've taken from the phone companies, the surcharges or the taxes, gets spent in the right location, so I'm, I'm okay with that.
So all the nine-one funds are now just gonna be in the nine-one.
So you want, for my clarification, when you're saying you're adding it to it, it means you're just taking, there's a hundred and thirty-one thousand, you're taking seventy thousand to pay these bills? And there's still sixty thousand.
And I'm only requesting seventy less.
What I'm asking is, that equipment, I moved funds from the nine-one fund into it just to put aside monies for nine-one, well, we don't need that anymore. So what I'm asking is, can't we just take the equipment fund monies, which is one thirty-one, put it into the nine-one fund? It doesn't mean it's.
But does that go, does that go away at the end of the year?
No, it doesn't, because it's a separate fund.
Because that's what I don't want, I don't want it to go away back into the.
It can't, these monies were collected, I have to spend them.
That's just what I wanna make sure it doesn't.
Okay, so we're gonna change line item four forty-six to a hundred and thirty thousand.
Yes, correct.
And then, then we're going to take a hundred and thirty thousand of the twenty-nine thirteen fund and transfer.
Twenty-nine thirteen fund, we're gonna take a whole amount.
So what the, one hundred and thirty-one, four oh one.
I'm gonna.
You're gonna move it to twenty-nine eleven?
The nine eleven.
Twenty-nine eleven?
Right, so that's gonna go to twenty-nine.
Okay.
So then all those funds. Okay.
That works.
Makes more sense when you say it like that, since I'm adding it.
Budget wise, two years before I forget about it too, if, if it comes to time that you guys are looking at, uh, changing and acquiring my staff to pay for health insurance that you're covering completely right now. That will be a perceived, not that it, I get it, um, you know, logical that they're just paying for their health insurance if we make that a ten percent in the future or a twenty percent number. But that's gonna be a perceived payoff, so I would like to know about that in advance, so I would try to ask for that same amount back, you know, for a raise in the future, just looking at the future, not at the present. If that's something we ever look at, we'd have to watch that. There's nothing worse for the morale of employees to see a smaller check at the end of the month than the next year than the year before.
That's what I'm trying to avoid.
Right.
I was still on nine-one-one funds, which, when you started your conversation.
See, I'm, I'm relieving your headache.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna ask you to go all the way back to the beginning of your, uh, statement.
If the year arises, I don't know what year you're looking at, next year, I think we're planning on paying the employees full health insurance.
Yes, we are so far.
Okay, if, if that would change, because you're paying the full one now, and I asked about fifty. If you change and decide their employees are gonna pay ten percent.
Yep.
That's gonna be a perceived, not that it's real, I, I get the administrative side of it too, but if, my employees are perceive it as payoff. And that's the situation I do wanna avoid.
They'll perceive it and it also will feel it.
Yeah, they'll feel it, but that is a payoff.
Yeah.
Okay.
Nothing worse than morale than payoff when you're doing a good job.
Yeah, I've been there before.
Okay, so now.
So, but then you're.
So you're gonna, you're gonna move a hundred and thirty-one thousand out of the.
Right.
Twenty-nine thirteen fund and put it into the.
Which is the twenty-nine eleven?
The twenty-nine eleven fund. So you'll reflect that on here. So that the bottom.
In the.
Line here under total public safety.
Speaking seventy thousand on his sheriff's budget is gonna reflect here.
Correct.
But we just added seventy-five.
Right.
So it's gonna be about the same.
It's gonna be a wash.
An idea today is just to get a feel for what.
What you need that bottom line.
Oh, that, yeah. Is that right?
That's what I said.
I have, I have a separate.
Yeah.
You don't have to look, look in other places, but it will help.
Well, what I'm getting at is, it's gonna show as an, as an income somewhere, so that the total public safety with what, with, nothing else that we're talking about. The total public safety is actually going to, uh, decrease by a hundred and thirty thousand as far as.
It'll only come down seventy.
Seventy.
It should only come down seventy thousand.
Yeah, you have.
Still want that cushion belt then.
Yeah, you have a, you have a mill levy fund, which is the general, you have a non-mill levy fund, which is the nine-one-one.
Right.
We take seventy thousand out of the general, so that's gonna reduce the general amount, but the nine-one-one is gonna be a wash.
That money's all gonna stay there.
It's all gonna stay there.
Nine-one funds, just to care.
We can, I can reduce you seventy, that's it.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it did add a hundred thousand expected revenue.
So that helps me do it.
For, for his special house.
Yeah.
Yes, I, I just, what I'm trying to get at is the monies that's gonna be transferred over gets reflected in the total amount, not that it, not that we. Your total budget, three million dollars, but we're gonna take seventy thousand out of another fund and put it in there, that should reduce the three million by seventy thousand, is what I'm getting at. Okay.
So crystal ball, uh, line one or line two? I'm good with the sheriff's budget.
And my, my other line is like I said, they just reflect it, they just reflect, uh.
Yes.
The inflation, everything else I've kept the same, you know, it's just, I can't, can't control the economy and it's terrible.
Okay, any more further questions for our sheriff?
No.
Any other comments? Thank you.
Thank you, prisoners.
Uh, anybody need a break? If not, buildings and grounds, Mr. Albers. And where do I have that one here?
Mine was way in the back, I missed it.
Way in the back. You already found yours, I never have one.
Yeah.
Page nineteen?
Yep.
Which page are we starting with?
Nineteen.
Eighteen.
Nineteen?
Yeah, it's your janitor one.
The old, the old guy's getting help here.
We're on the same one, I hope.
I got this one here in the top, it says page nineteen.
Yep.
Okay. I hope we don't have several page nineties.
I don't think it matters, because I have a minute, I'm still gonna pull.
That goes over here. All right. Janitor.
Okay, the one-one-four line, that is for the two custodians and my maintenance techs, that's their salaries. Which I did the dollar fifty as suggested by Alice, increase across the board. Um, administrative, I don't have any, appointed department head, I'm gonna, maybe have Alice explain that to you, what we figured out on, on mine there.
So previously, when Jim's wage was considered, it was just for maintenance supervisor, did not include risk management. So what I did is when I got the averages from the state and the Daco, I figured out what risk managers were making in the state. And then I took, of course, the counties that were comparable to us, the taxable valuations, population size, and stuff like that. Jim wasn't basically not getting paid for his risk manager job, so that's why I suggested he get a bump up to that new wage of thirty-seven twenty-four an hour. Which would include paying him for his risk manager role at the county, plus his years of experience as the maintenance supervisor. And then if you do the dollar fifty increase, it'd be thirty-eight seventy-four an hour.
And then do a, I always figure a hundred hours possible overtime for mine and my maintenance tech for like moving snow and cullins, emergencies, things like that, so. The number that is up there is, is with that adjustment. And I did figure it without the adjustment. Um, I don't know if you wanna go with that number.
Question, I, I, I'm, on the road department too, I was running into this, but it's like, the eighty-six three ninety, is that, is that reflecting the base pay or is that reflecting the hundred hours overtime and bills into that?
Which number?
The eighty-six three ninety. On one twenty-two.
That is with the hundred hours overtime.
Okay, that's what, I was curious about that.
Yes, I always figure that in there.
Yeah. Because I, I run into that, it's the road department too is asking, I, I, just curious, okay, that clarifies for me.
And if you do it without the adjustment, the, which is the increase, it would be thirty-six seventy-two per hour and, and the whole budget would be eighty-one, eight, eighty-six, that's without the adjustment.
I guess I would leave it in there, and I know we've looked at the wages across the county, but we haven't, we haven't adopted anything yet, correct?
No, and that'll be a discussion further down the road.
Yeah.
But everything was included, yes.
Yep. Okay, why is there a thousand dollars for vacation and sick leave payout?
I just put that in there in case someone leaves or retires or something, so something's in there.
And normally.
I know last year there was zero and then I was minus in that line, because.
Well, because that's.
That's what that's for, I thought, so.
I know, but we, I guess.
But that's calculated in your wage.
I don't know about that, but I know we've never done that before. We've never put it in there, but.
I have before and it's been in there.
If you, if your wage is a hundred thousand dollars a year, when you take sick leave and or vacation, you just put in, because you accrue those days. You don't get, you're not gonna get a hundred and ten thousand plus eight days of vacation, uh, another eight hundred dollars, you're not gonna get a hundred and.
I don't think that.
That's not, that's not what I was referencing.
This is about if somebody leaves employment and you have to pay them out for their vacation and sick leave. And then you have, if somebody else hired on, so you won't have that extra money there.
For example, like, you know, I've been here a long time, if, if I say I'm retiring and you gotta pay me out, you gotta pay me. For example, like, you know, I've been here a long time, if, if I say I'm retiring, and you gotta pay me out, you gotta pay me whatever that twelve and a half percent for the sick leave, plus you gotta pay all my vacation. So you're gonna have extra pay if you have someone else start in a couple weeks, that's, you're gonna have extra money there that wasn't budgeted for, so.
Normally we just.
You better not be getting any ideas, Charlie.
Listen here. We tried to save money for that.
So you're saying you're only taking a thousand dollars for vacation.
Well, I know, I just put something in there, so something's there.
But actually, we never have, we never have, and if you look across, you never have either, you've had actual expenses.
Last year was the only year that.
But nobody fills in that line.
Last year was the only year there was nothing in there, I believe.
So what do you do with that?
Nothing in there, cause you didn't use it.
I know.
You didn't budget for it, you just didn't use it as actual monies.
So the question is, is what if we do have employees who do leave, what, where does that come from then?
General fund?
That's why we have a buffer in the general fund. You can't plan for that.
No, no, that's what I was just wondering.
Somebody quit, they're only gonna have that much.
Why do we have that line item in there, then, may I ask?
It's a, it's a.
If we do pay it out, then we have a line to show the expense.
I would.
We have to have it there.
The line item stays, but I would zero it for, for the budget.
That's what I would do.
It would help you on that too.
Or, it, it, to me, it's almost, would be double budgeting, even though we pay, pay it out. You're saying you're budgeting for, for a vacation again. Which, you know, I have a little bit of a tough time with that, I understand the premise of what you're trying to say, but.
We're paying it on the general fund, why, why would you afford on this one?
We can't, I mean, you can't have every department budgeting.
So just zero, zero this one out, that'll help you with your, on money.
Alice has something.
And the thing is, if you put that in there, that means we're milling for that.
That's what I'm getting at.
That's why we can't.
We don't wanna.
Because we have a spot coming out of the general fund if, in, in case that event occurs, right?
That's why we always have a buffer.
See, this, this is not a yearly thing, unless we go through employees every year.
And you'd be mailing for it, you can't mail for it, that would be, all right.
I would.
I know you can't mail for it, but as a suggestion, I think we should get a total amount of what is on the books right now for vacation and sick leave. So we can kind of get an idea, if we get hard with retirements or people exiting, we kind of know what we're gonna have to cover. But we really need to know what a dollar amount is for the sick and vacation leave.
Is that where you got all the sick leave and vacation from you, are you adding that up? Cause remember, I gave you everything.
That was just the one month, every month I need to get everything.
But that should show you, and then once we switch over to Tyler, it should be easy.
But that, that's a tough number to come up with, okay? So Jim has been here, I don't know how many, I honestly don't, have no idea how many hours of vacation he gets a year. Well, he can only carry two-hundred and forty, right? So if he earns a hundred and twenty, we're, we don't budget for two-hundred and forty when he retires, when he retires, if, if, if you wanna be exact. You'd only budget for the hundred and twenty then.
No, no budget.
Because we already have the hundred and twenty in the budget that he earns every year.
Right, but.
Which I know it's way more than that, I'm sorry, I know.
But just to know what is on the books for vacation and sick leave right now for all of our employees.
Well, that's okay to know that, yeah.
That's what I'm suggesting, so you kind of know what is on the books, so if we do have a mass exodus, we're prepared and we have that buffer in the general fund to cover that if that should occur. That's actually a liability, your vacation sick leave is actually a liability.
I, I, I think, I agree with you, but I think we're in two different spots right here. Fifty thousand dollars in there, I think we should.
Just zero.
And I think what you're saying is a whole different thing, and I agree with that.
I think all, I think all five commissioners are going along with, we should have that at zero, so.
So like, if someone retires, it still goes on there as an expense on that line, is that how you do it?
Yeah, cause it shows where it's coming out.
Well.
Our budget could go over, just so you know.
Yes and no. Yes and no, because you're gonna pay them out the amount of vacation they earned for this year, which is gonna come out of your normal amount. So if you're over and above that, that would come out of here, out of the general fund. Cause if you earn, if you earn, uh, two-hundred and forty hours in a year, that's already in the budget. So when you retire, you're gonna get your two-hundred and forty hours, you're not gonna get four-hundred and eighty.
Yeah, but if you have someone new starting really soon.
Then they only have.
Then you're gonna be.
They only have the eight hours. They'll have what?
You're gonna be double paying for a while, is.
But, yeah, it's.
So.
No, I'm, I, yeah, I'm. Once again, I'm not a, a coward, so I don't. But to me.
I'm fine if I go to zero and I just, you know.
Put it this way, it's not gonna affect you running your, your department, if it's a thousand or if it's zero.
If somebody leaves, for whatever reason, and you're over on the red on that, that's gonna, you're still gonna be on the black on the bottom.
Yeah.
And.
Well, it could go over, I think.
To even add to it, it's not a problem you're gonna, for you to, to tackle.
Right.
These five up here would have to do that.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
So I think we're all good with having that at zero.
Okay, uh, click my rental, I just put zero in there, we don't usually use that. Three forty-one, I put a thousand dollars in there this year because, uh, the maintenance tech I have now, he's a veteran. And, uh, we found out, he found out about this, it's a VA assistance program, it's chapter thirty, is what he said. And it's a program, he can take the CDL course and get a CDL license for free. Through that program, and he's a veteran, and I put a thousand bucks in there so we could pay his mileage to go to Bismarck, it's at VSC. They do the whole course, it's a ten-day course, and they do it, they, he gets to take his test through that and everything, and it doesn't cost the county anything extra, so I just put that in there if. If you guys don't think that's a good idea, then we can take it out, but to me, I think that would be a pretty good benefit if he has a CDL to help. If need be, he can have, get a truck from the county shop, he can haul snow, and that's the biggest thing that, that we don't have right now, because I'd have, I gotta get the county shop to come over here to drive the truck.
And then they send you a bill for the snow removals, so really.
So to me, it would be a benefit, you know.
Saying, well, you're coming up with a, a reason, and that would be what we would need to.
I figured out mileage from, I think that's, he lives in center, so it'd be from center to Bismarck for ten days, and then I put a little bit extra in case the weather, it's in January. And he's gonna do it in case the weather's bad, so he could maybe stay at a motel if, if need be, I put a couple hundred bucks extra in there for that, so.
I think it seems reasonable.
Okay, I'm good with it.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, telephone, we got, there's two cell phones for the maintenance department, that comes out to be a thousand twenty per year with the plans. And I just kind of guessed, I did fifty bucks a month for the maintenance phone, I don't know where that's at, I asked Guino Alco, and. I don't know what the monthly bill is gonna be.
Well, and we kind of went off this last bill.
So I don't know.
The next bill is what's really gonna give us the solid numbers.
Cause it'd be mid-year bill?
No, it'll be, then we got it all, the phone off and everything is set, then we get a good number.
So I just kind of figured fifty bucks a month for that, and then I got a little bit extra for cellphone, if we need to buy a cellphone or accessories or something.
And, uh, this, the cellphone thing, you guys are still investigating that, correct?
Yeah, I haven't had the chance.
Okay, that's fine.
I have it on the.
Okay, moving on.
Okay.
Casting oil, or no, we're up at parts and labor.
Parts, labor, towing, that's for the maintenance pickup. So I just put that in there. Gas, oil, and fuel, that's for the maintenance pickup only, for, you know, go and get parts and mail and stuff like that. Education training, I put two-hundred and fifty dollars in case there's a program that I can have John go to or, you know, online something for training for being a maintenance tech. Um, and tires, fifteen hundred dollars in case I need some for the maintenance pickup.
What was the, uh, line item, four-ten, parts, labor, and towing? Two thousand, what did you say about that?
That is for the maintenance pickup. So.
And the tires are for the maintenance pickup?
Yeah, and this budget is strictly for the maintenance pickup. The other equipment's in the billing and ground budget.
Right, and gas, oil, and fuel is for the maintenance pickup.
Right.
Okay. Any questions on that page as of right now?
No.
Okay, page eighteen.
I'm kind of nineteen, we just did eighteen.
We just did nineteen. Now we're on eighteen.
Nineteen.
Billings and grounds.
We just did nineteen.
Right, now we're on eighteen.
Now we're on, yeah. Going backwards in numbers, but I just.
Before was a page.
I read up in the right-hand corner, so I'm trying, so that I'm on the same page that the rest of my commissioners are on.
Okay. Uh, for four-ten, that's for parts, labor, towing, that's for parts for lawn mowers, Bobcat, all the equipment we got, things like that. Uh, supplies and materials, that's for like janitor, all our janitorial cleaning supplies, and I left that. Left that the same as before, cause I talked to the supplier, and it doesn't foresee an increase or a huge increase, so. Uh, gas, oil, and fuel, that is for fuel and oil and stuff for the Bobcat, lawn mowers, generator, things like that, so. Renovation of county property, I put forty-five thousand in there again, that is, again, to, if we get properties back on back taxes, to do demo on them or whatever's required. So that's just kind of a guess, I don't know, there was quite a few properties when I did this that were still outstanding on their taxes, so. Whether that's enough or not, I don't know. Purchase of real estate, I don't foresee buying anything unless you guys know of anything we're gonna buy.
Nothing but me.
Future building improvements, that's the money we budget each year to be transferred into the building fund. For future use. ADA improvements, uh, that I don't foresee any, cause everything's pretty well up to code. Building improvements, that is, uh, if you wanna do any small projects, all our big projects are over with now, I put forty thousand in there, I know we've been talking about. Remodeling the two bathrooms in the old courthouse and in that conference room over here, yet there's the only two that haven't been touched yet, so. We wanna pursue that, I just put forty thousand in there, so we have something for next year. Building maintenance, that is, uh, kind of a guess again, I, I usually budget about eighty thousand for miscellaneous and foreseeing things that break, go wrong. Uh, in that, in that line item, there is several service agreements, annual service agreements. For like the battery backup, Dakota pump, for the sewer grinders, uh, fire alarm inspection, Butler for the generator, change oil and do the service on that. Nova Fire, fire extinguisher systems for the Ansel system and the jail kitchen, and for Energy Tech Systems, and. All of those adding up is about twenty-nine thousand five hundred for service agreements for the year, so.
Generator, is that diesel or propane?
The cat, that's diesel.
Diesel.
We do, uh, we do every other year oil change on that, when we first started out, we decided. Really wasn't needed every year, cause it doesn't run, you know, that much, so we do every other year. So it's like this year's a little bit more money, and then next year will be less money without the oil change, so. And then, uh, four-forty-two, building outside maintenance, that has to do with when you do the lawn care bids for spraying the lawn, things like that, for sprinkler system repairs and parking lot repairs. Things like, they're outdoors, so. Please purchase the equipment, that is to buy like weed eaters, janitorial equipment, vacuums, things like that, so I put fifteen hundred bucks in there. And tires, that is, would be for tires for lawnmower and Bobcat, basically, so. And we just got new tires on the Bobcat last year, so I don't foresee big costs there, so. Better put it in there just in case we need them, so.
What's, uh, okay, there's a line item here for tires, what's these four-twenty-three, supplies and materials?
That is for my janitorial cleaning, chemicals and dust mops and all that stuff.
Okay.
Telepaper, all your paper products, all that stuff.
And four-ten, parts, labor, and towing?
That's for parts for the Bobcat, parts for lawn mowers, all the equipment, if we need parts for generators, things like that.
So why do they have tires separately?
That's just the way it's always been, because we put the maintenance pickup in the janitor budget, cause that's.
Okay. That's back, but that is separate already.
But these are tires for the Bobcat.
These are tires for like Bobcat, that we need, and for lawnmower and things like that.
I understand it, but I don't know why it couldn't just be part of the parts.
I think there's a lot of these lines on a lot of them that could be consolidated on everyone's budgets.
What, what question too is like, I seen, you know, like, you know, we just did your big bill that comes in, it's propane, where does that come in, is it on this or somewhere else?
No, you, you budgeted for that, that way.
Oh.
You budgeted that for utilities.
Well, that comes in, that's on.
Yeah.
We don't do summer, do you do summer fill, is the last propane?
It's contracted.
It's contracted, so it doesn't matter.
So they fill it as they can, right?
They fill it, that's, they're supposed to keep it full, and it's one brace all year.
We're on that keep it fill program, and then it's a contract price, so.
Yeah, don't change.
Right, that, we, we brought that up at the last meeting, and that was my assumption, was that we're just on a keep fill, but it's a contract price, so it doesn't matter if it's June, July, December, January, it's.
They're always here, every two weeks, they're, so.
Well, it's the county.
I just curious where it comes, they did, that was a pretty good size, and I didn't see it on here.
Yeah, for me, and I know I'm probably dragging this out more than we need to, to have the discussion here now, but some of these, I, I, it just. Bewilders me why you'd have tires separate if they're part of the parts, because it's got, it's for the lawnmower, Bobcat, and those items, so why even have it separate? Might as well, I mean, I'll be facetious when I have oil separate, gas separate, nuts, bolts, blades for the lawnmower, you know. But whatever.
Well, you know, this would be the time for the department to go through and consolidate.
Well.
They're gonna switch over to Tyler by the first of the year, that's gonna be a good time.
We can have that discussion down the road, but, cause right now, we're just asking our department heads, why you want a thousand dollars where it's at?
All of them, there's lines and.
So, okay.
This has always been there, so.
Like I said, I'm a little off. We can discuss that later. Okay, any, any questions on that page? Page forty-four on mine.
That is the risk management one. I, uh, I know we'd, uh, discussed, and we, we put those in the DACO, refund checks into a fund, correct?
Count twenty-one oh five, we named it.
Right, so I, I reduced that budget by quite a bit, I left a little bit in there. And the reasoning is this, if, uh, let's say we wanna buy one item or something, that way we don't have to do a fund. That was my reasoning, if you wanted to zero it out, I guess, you know, we have like, what, sixteen thousand in there, so.
Nope, we have fourteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Right, that's the reason I cut it, so if you want to cut it more, it's fine, as long as I got money to use for safety items and things like that, that's why I wanted that fund started, so.
Do you, uh?
And the total fund is only one thousand two fifty. Is what Jim just said.
And we, for accounting purposes, I just question here, it's like, we got salaries zero and we put, we've got salaries all on, are they supposed to be separate or are they?
No, we just did, just combined.
That makes a bigger mess with that.
Right.
No, it was. It was.
They used to be separate, but now they are not because we put it in stock.
Yeah.
With you. Okay.
So it's not on there, yes.
I, I, don't even want to go there.
Yep. Got your answer, huh?
I've already been down that road.
Page fifty-eight.
I don't have that, what's that?
Building improvements, building fund, didn't you get that one? I know you didn't put anything in it, but you gave it to me.
That's.
It's just a, a future building, that's where we, we put the twenty-five thousand of his, we transferred over there.
From that, uh, building.
Yeah, and right now there's a balance of, no, it's not, no.
Twenty-one oh one.
It's the building fund. This is fund twenty-one oh one. Oh, here it is, okay, so right now we have a balance, it's a July first, in that building fund is one hundred seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred eighty-six dollars and three cents.
For future building?
Yes, and, and this year we so far used fifty-one thousand three hundred sixty, but we put twenty-five thousand a year, every year into that fund.
Yeah, that's how we built up for the cooler and other things.
Yeah, just for bigger items that might cool. Oh, and where do you show that twenty-five thousand?
That is, oh, okay, so I have my transfer sheet is where it does show also how we transfer it out.
But then he also.
It's on his sheet.
It's on page eighteen.
Four-thirty-eight.
Item four-thirty-eight. Four-thirty-eight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm good. I'm good.
Okay, so janitor then, the only thing you did is just your off, this vacation sick leave.
Yep.
Yep.
Um, just one question on the, on the workers' comp premium, your budget for that, right? We're not gonna use this fund money for that.
Right, no.
Okay, you're just gonna.
Yeah, this is all in that risk management fund, all those funds, and I told you that fourteen thousand.
No, like, when you get the workers' comp premium, you're still budgeting for that, that's my only concern.
Oh, yeah, in the general fund.
Otherwise that'd eat up quite a bit of that, okay.
Yeah, workers' comp and, um, social security and.
Yep.
Okay. Unemployment and that'll.
Understood.
For almost all departments, it'll be just in the general fund. I gotta, I can't say all. Say almost all. All right, any, any other questions? None, thank you, Jim.
Yep.
Anyone need a break?
Break, eleven, twelve? Are we taking a break or?
We're okay? All right, uh, recorder. I gotta find that in here.
It's the one, the longer one.
Yeah, it's the legal size one.
This one? This one here?
Yes.
I've never done this, y'all, so kind of walk me through it.
Well, you're gonna really, we're gonna really run you through the.
What I did for her thing is I put in the wages with the bump ups, so that's what they're seeing.
The two or the one?
So it's that last page.
You don't have this one?
Of your recorded thing.
Okay, with total budget, one thirty-eight, thirty-nine eighty.
So that's the one that I should review then?
That's the one that I got in there, and then of course your document.
Document preservation.
All right, I think everyone.
So do I just go through line by line and tell you what it's about, or what am I supposed to do here? I have never done this, so.
We've done it either way.
Yeah.
Um, well, just for your information, since you guys don't really know, we do, we go through our document preservation first. Um, micro, microfilming, we have our old documents are on microfilm and they're stored down in Utah in the salt mines, and we pay a yearly rental fee to keep those down there, so that's what that is. Um, our index books, binders, restoration.
So you, you've used three hundred sixty-four to date in?
I budget a thousand because that's what it's been every year. What, if it's gonna go up, I haven't heard, I just put it in there because that's kind of like Jim said, that's what it always was.
So.
Nothing gives you shine, it's just my favorite statement, those two, that's how we've always done it.
Yeah, I didn't know, like, I've never had that stated before.
Are you gonna, uh, is there gonna be more than three hundred sixty-four dollars and eighty cents this year?
I don't know, I mean, last year it was the same, I haven't heard if it's gonna change, so if you want to take away that six hundred dollars or five hundred dollars out of that thousand dollars for someplace else, I guess.
Well, he.
It's your boat, but.
But remember, this is not a general fund, this is its own fund, twenty-one ten.
Oh, yeah, yeah, document preservation.
And the balance in that fund right now is a hundred and one thousand seven hundred fifty-three dollars and fifty-six.
But that's our money.
That is.
Every document we record, three dollars of that goes into this fund for our personal use because we need to buy the books, we need to have the training, we need to have the computer software, we need to have the, um.
Yep, okay, so, so right now there's how much in that fund?
A hundred and one thousand seven hundred fifty-three dollars and fifty-six cents.
So honestly, this one.
How much came out of that fund this year?
So far, five thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Which is generally for books.
But this is a, this is a non-mile levy, this is a strict fund.
Income.
So.
This is fees.
Yeah, so the expense is, even if we change them, doesn't change our.
The amount of my. This line doesn't go.
Yeah, this, this whole page doesn't.
So I can't say it stays that way just because, right. Then that way.
This whole page is not, not, not.
She just knows that's my overall favorite statement.
Doesn't affect our general fund or any of that stuff.
And I'm gonna say that a couple more times.
Because it's always done.
It's fine, it's nothing.
Recording fees.
I understand.
It would have been one of those things I'd say to my mom, but why?
Yeah, this is a unique one, where.
On this page.
This page.
So it really.
Doesn't matter.
I just wanted to bring it up so you guys would know what it is.
I didn't want to say them with exact words, but.
It really doesn't, nobody really knows what it is.
Okay, sorry, we're having our own little conversation up here, but, okay, go ahead.
Do you understand what it is yet?
Yep.
It doesn't matter, is what I've been told.
I do, I gotta come look at some of this someday.
But.
Somebody needs to come in and see what we actually do in our office, you guys would be amazed what's in there, and I feel like, honey, you really know.
Except maybe Travis.
I know what isn't in there sometimes.
You do, yeah, unfortunately.
I've made Amber look up some things for me because it doesn't make any sense. Why they're not in there.
Yeah, um, so then I guess we'll go on to just the general, um, Carmen said she gave you the one where I was asking for the two bump ups, we got the dollar fifty, cost of living. And we also feel that for myself, I would like the six-year, um, bump up because of my three years as the city planner and my three years here. Currently, I'm not even making the hiring point. Amber's a little bit above, but she also has years of experience here at the county, at the auditor's office and at my office. So we're figuring six years across the board for both of us, which would bring us up to the seventy-one and the six, fifty-seven, um.
And you know, when I had started looking at wages last budget season before that, and you, you two were top on my list of needing to move. I felt, compared to other departments.
And I'm, I'm going low.
Though we can't compare departments, but it's still, when I looked at Nodaco site and other recorders, it was, I felt it was low.
Thank you. Um, we don't need the clerical so much, um, last year I budgeted for that because I knew I was gonna be gone. Um, and Amber went to our convention in my place, so we had to have somebody cover that, um, I don't know why that's, oh, yeah, that was last year, so, yeah, we used that last year, but generally we don't. I would like Amber to come along to a convention sometime in the future, but I'm in no hurry to do that, so I didn't budget for it.
Are you on?
She's on the third page now.
Okay.
Sorry, yeah.
One thousand one.
Yep, which line are you on right now?
Uh, three, four, one, travel and per diem.
Yep.
Okay, so I budgeted fifteen hundred, that's usually, um, if I go to Endrin meetings, that's the Nerd's Quarter Recorders commit, or group. Um, they're all over the state, generally I don't go because they are so far away, but Endrin reimburses me for my travel on those. But our travel and per diem is usually for a convention, which is once a year, uh, it's usually about four days, um, a stay at a motel. Honestly, fifteen hundred's high, but it's always been that way, this year I didn't go, so it's a little lower. Telephone went up, so I included that just a little bit, um, normally I think I had it at around seven hundred, this year I'm budgeting for eight. Uh, my membership, I think Carmen sent me an email regarding that, um, our licensing and our membership fees are usually around two fifty, but I think it's gone up because they're including some like the cost of the convention or something in it, I think that way they get their money whether you go or not, so I'm figuring around five hundred for that. Um, we get the, um, Hazen Star, and that's gone up, so rather than a forty-five, I went to the fifty. Um, our office supplies, we don't buy very many big things, it's usually just for little items. I think the most expensive thing I've bought is a typewriter in the time I've been here. And our index books, that's where we spend our most money, each of our books costs two hundred dollars, our papers a hundred dollars a ream, because it's a hundred percent cotton. Um, that's our most expensive thing, we've been really slow this last year, but generally, we spend a lot more on books.
Shannon, why can't four-eighteen come out of?
The other one?
On the twenty-one ten.
I, I, I was looking at that too, and I'm, I'm pretty sure when I submit my invoices and stuff, I take it out of document preservation. So I don't know why some of it comes out of there and.
You know what, let's check on that, because if you, you're the department head and whatever account you put it in, that's what we take it off, so let's look at that.
I always wondered why there was.
So what was, what was your question?
So like, line item four-eighteen is budgeting for five thousand dollars and kind of has the last few years, but if we have this preservation fund with a hundred and one thousand dollars in it, why can't that?
Exactly.
Those expenses come out of that fund versus budgeting for.
It's up to the department.
Is that the same?
Right, and like I said, I, this is my first time sitting here, so I've never given it any thought, I just, I, I've noticed it and wondered myself, but I'm not sure why it's set up.
We have four-eighteen on both sides, what, what's the?
Because one is not in the general fund and one is the dime.
Right, so this would be the two-one-one.
So some of them come out of document preservation, which makes a lot more sense, because that's what those books are completely used for, they're not, they're only used for, they're not a separate. Because we could get rid of that five thousand.
I think four-eighteen on fund one thousand one should go to zero.
And all that stuff should be taken out of fund twenty-one ten.
Whoa, just a minute, Jamie, what?
I think line item four-eighteen on fund one thousand one of five thousand dollars should go to zero because that five thousand dollars can come out of fund twenty-one ten, which is the preservation fund, and there's a balance of a hundred and, almost a hundred and two thousand dollars in it.
Okay, we don't have that one in front of us.
Yeah, it's the first page.
All right.
So I'm gonna add five thousand to that.
Okay, twenty-one ten fund, yep, gotcha.
Yeah, this should go to zero, come out of this.
I'm following you.
Four-eighteen, I'll add five thousand.
Yes, that works for me. And then the last one is our education and training, that's kind of the same thing, when we go to conventions and stuff.
It's not here, it should be here.
That's all that is, and it's, I just leave it at five thousand just to be safe in case anything changes from year to year. Um, our, Gwen and I were talking, um, other counties right now, our deeds all go to the auditor before they come to us, and there's been some problems with the legal descriptions where the auditor can't track them through the tax system. Other counties supposedly, everything goes to the recorder first, then it goes to the auditor, and it comes back to the recorder, but I spoke to our document company. In order to do that, the auditor's office sounds like, I'm not gonna say because he's told me to wait until we learn more, but there might have to be some licensing issues for the auditor to get the ability to do that, um, there'll have to be a separate computer, it might be expensive. So I think that's why we probably left it the way it was, but just, I didn't budget for it because it's kind of up in the area, and if we have, if we do decide to do it, we can always do it next year. It's just so you know that that might be coming down the pipe.
And if it's really expensive, we can even budget for it next year.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm hoping.
We've been doing this way for a long time, but at least for, for Congress.
Yes, it's, I mean, I wasn't even aware that we were the only county, well, I think, he said McLean just switched over recently. But he was talking that there will be a licensing thing because right now we're only licensed for the two computers, Amber's and I's, so Amber's and I's, Amber and mine. And in order for the auditor to also be able to access those documents, we have to have another computer and the licensing and all that stuff, we have to include that.
What software does this?
Uh, our document pro, programming.
Oh, okay.
Because right now, the way they come through, they, they come off, people pay electron, sorry, it's electronic, so when people pay for electronic documents, first it goes through Simplefile and then it comes to us in the program where we can manipulate the documents. And the deeds have to go to their office first to make sure that the taxes are paid and they can transfer all of that. Right now, they go to them first, what they want us to do, and I think your office wants it to do, is come to us first so we can double check and make sure everything's correct. Then we send it to them for their transfer, and then it all comes back to us, and then we can complete all the recording. But right now it goes to them, and I'm thinking that was their way of bypassing the expense when we first got the program back in around two thousand nineteen, I think we figured out, I'm not even sure how long we've had it, but. So that's, I think, and why we kind of, he was really surprised when he got on my computer, he was like, wow, so we must be really different than the other counties much.
Not much surprises me anymore.
No. And, yeah, other than that, um, I guess, yeah, the only things we really had changing were those few things and that thing with the binders and the books, I'm good with that coming out of there. And.
Do we need travel and per diem at fifteen hundred?
Only if the two of us would go together, and then, in that case, we'd also need clerical, but the idea of Amber and I going at the same time is very slim just because I don't feel comfortable leaving the office with the two of us gone, so it doesn't have to be that high, no.
You've never, um, in the last?
Well, in two thousand twenty-two, it was almost eight hundred, so.
Right.
That's if I go to every meeting, which I hate going to, so it's probably not gonna happen, but it could.
Well, we don't want you not to go to meetings.
No, because I do need to learn stuff, but I just am not.
But even based on that, the highest it's been is seven hundred and sixty.
So if you want to drop it down to eight, nine, whatever.
I was thinking more like a thousand, that's, that's a heck of a decrease.
Yeah, if you want to drop it.
I think we could do that. If you had specific numbers that would, you know, get you close to at least that thousand, then we would, I would be more comfortable leaving that fifteen hundred, but if you don't
No.
have anything specific.
No, and like I said, there's only so many of them, and a couple of them, the, the Endrin actually pays for my travel, so this is basically just for the convention. And that's only once a year for a couple of days, so it should never basically go over a thousand dollars, I wouldn't think.
So if we did the bump ups for you guys, that would change your budget like twelve thousand dollars roughly?
Yeah, yeah, the difference between, um, I did have another one.
There's two of them, yeah, there's two here.
I figured it out with just the cost of living would be about six thousand dollars, with the cost of living and the six years, the total will be about eighteen thousand, just for our wage increase.
Wages and salaries will be another discussion.
Yeah, we've, what we did with the other ones is we kept the request in there, but we haven't adopted the hiring point and we haven't finalized wages, so. At this point, we're leaving it in the budget so that we have a representation of the requests.
Any other questions, are we done?
I have no more questions.
All I got.
So yours will change like fifty-five hundred.
Yep.
Thank you, Shannon. Anybody need a break? We're getting way behind, uh, now we got treasure. See if I can find hers here.
There's only a page.
Go to here, right?
We're not giving out gold stars, but...
Just the mere mention of it, thank you.
Treasure. Found you. I have you.
Okay.
Mine says page ten at the top.
Yep.
Okay, everyone ready?
Yep.
Okay, good. Dawn?
You wanna line by line?
Well, the salaries portion, we kinda skipped, 'cause we'll do that another discussion, so... Um, going right down to like two twelve, and kinda, let's start there.
Okay, two twelve is vacation sick leave, so...
So I guess it doesn't matter.
Travel and per diem, I bumped that up because I would like to go to the National Association of County Collectors, Treasurers, and Financial Officers. And it's in Philadelphia this year. So I got, I talked to some people who have been there, kinda got some estimates on what it costs for registration, what it costs to fly there, um, that kinda thing, so that's why that went up. Um, my telephone was kinda tough because my telephone bill is supposed to be around sixty-some plus dollars or whatever. Um, but we seem to be having trouble. Mine doesn't seem to be going down because of my fax machine, so I'm not real sure what's gonna happen there, but I kinda went in the middle and... It went with seventy, took it times twelve, and then rounded up to nine hundred, so that's that one. Um, membership licenses and fees, they combined the auditor and the treasurer's association, so Carmen and I are splitting the five hundred dollar fee that that will cost us. Publications, I just went up because they seem to go up every once in a while, and I didn't wanna not have enough. Um, office supplies, I pulled my printer out, that's why that's lower. We have a plan to take the copier contracts all under one umbrella so that Carm, Gwen only gets one bill a month, and it will cover all the copier contracts, so...
I also question every month why that's not a thing.
Yeah, they've been working on that for a while. Yeah, we finally got a quote, and after fact, he gave it to us at the convention of what it's gonna cost us, so... So that's that, it in a nutshell. My, my wage thing, just short version of that, is, um, I went with the eight-year midpoint. Um, I've got twelve years under my belt here. Um, Michelle has been working in accounting pretty much all her life, and Kathy worked in a bank and has tons of accounting spirits too. So I just thought that the eight-year midpoint was a good, fair start, so... That's that in a nutshell. Any questions?
Nope.
Cool star.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Son.
Carmen, do you have printed copies of Todd's?
Oh.
'Cause they got emailed out.
Yeah, you emailed them to you to make copies.
No, I don't, but I can get them. Can we take a quick break and I will? Does that work, Jean?
Yes.
'Cause I gave them right after meeting when I gave you those.
Fine.
Give me two seconds.
Well, we're gonna...
You emailed them, but did?
Anyone need a break?
Well, we don't have Todd's budget. We don't have paper copies of Todd's budget.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I was looking for it.
Three-minute break.
Okay. Take a minute. Uh, we're in recess now for five minutes. 'Cause everyone's taking off on me, I better call for recess.
Eleven thirty-two. They could make some labels we've been using for the last four years. We've got a one-time expense.
Well, I'm gonna exit too then, real quick. Don't know why I have to, 'cause I think after you, we got lunch break anyway. Or no? I didn't want to.
All I know is I'm supposed to be here at eleven thirty.
Yep.
I didn't introduce you to Ben, did I?
No.
Ben Guffin, this is Lysa Taylor, she's the commissioner, and she's one of the best probation officers in the state, and not just I.
Feeling so sad 'cause I work here. Nice to meet you, Ben.
Well, I didn't go long enough to know, but I don't go to school. Even had judges say, "Well, you've been the best probation officer in the state, what's the problem?"
People and their own will. That's all it is.
Something I'm researching now, I stumbled across it a couple of months ago. I've been looking, and it's a new drug we have coming out. Supposed to be forty times stronger than the Fentanyl. Coming from the same source, China.
Can, or can't even touch it?
We don't know. It had some successes. But, but I'm, I just dropped some of the information I have. Mark, he's gonna check to see if our MATE test's picking up. Is it Nidazone?
Probably not, because it had a different, different chemical makeup.
Well, it's a synthetic. So there's a chance. We'll go reach out to lab and see what they're testing for.
Yeah.
And we haven't seen it here yet.
What are we testing for now?
Nidazone. It's another synthetic opiate. Forty times stronger than Fentanyl.
Awesome. That sounds like fun.
They're just lovely.
Doesn't it? Do we know, is it like what it looks like and everything and stuff too? 'Cause I don't wanna be touching that.
Well, it, it looks like it.
Emailed, see?
You did email.
I did.
I did look at it, but did not print it.
Didn't say, are they pressing it? Okay.
Well, the mayor's on Detroit, they got...
And it's right there.
Okay. It could be anything really.
I did thirty-two. I would not have let Jean officially go into a break.
Wow.
Eleven thirty-two, Carmen, we...
I got it.
Okay.
Thanks for remembering. You got one? You got a copy there? Right.
Well, I think everyone that needs to be here is here, so we can, even though I said five minutes, we can reconvene. Uh, State's attorney, where did mine get laid? Right in front of me? Yep, right here. Okay.
All right, let me get to that proper page.
We're on, what's page eleven, and hopefully it's the same as what you got.
Better be, 'cause I just got it.
And you'll notice that it's nice and neatly handwritten. I had Michelle do it for me, so that way it would be legible.
Okay.
It's all right to have a weakness. It's a weakness, though, not to recognize your weakness. Michelle has much neater handwriting. We'll just start across it. What I'm proposing to do is, in working with Alice, uh, we talked about the salaries, and we went with the straight dollar fifteen hour that's been proposed. What I'm proposing is that instead of me taking a dollar fifteen hour more, I'm taking that and dividing it evenly for my staff. So instead of a buck fifty, I'm asking them to get to two fifty so they're each sharing in the buck fifteen hour that I would get. Leave my salary, freeze it at last year's low. Um, going down further, uh, you can see we kinda, the one, the one thing that we do need to change is I really, I don't have an office secretary. I have a victim.
You've blocked one seventeen and one eighteen, right?
Yeah.
And we talked about that last year, doing it.
Yeah.
Right.
So I put it the way it should be.
Okay.
So that figure, we're using the same figures with that proposed raise, but putting it in the right job description.
Or did you figure a buck fifty and?
Some be about.
Plus the seventy-five, is it split in half to the two girls?
I get that, but I mean, I'm just saying, if he just made a mistake the way he said it, or if that's exactly what, he said two fifty and it's actually?
No, two twenty-five.
Two twenty-five, and that's what's projected.
Did I mistake two fifty? I meant two twenty-five, okay.
We'll go by what he meant.
We're gonna go by what's on paper, not what he, what you said.
Right. Just how I got to those figures is I took the one fifty and then added in seventy-five cents by foregoing my cost of living jump.
I followed you.
Yep. Okay. Um, everything else is pretty well stayed the same except for item three seventeen. What we budgeted was a thousand, and with these two homicide trials, I wanna bu- bump that up for witness fees to fifteen hundred. I'd much rather have more budgeted and not spend it than have to come back and say, "Hey, oh, by the way, this trial and that trial and this trial" does not bump me over the witness fee that was budgeted. And then transcripts, we left that the same. We've come in under on that in the past, uh, but leaving it where it's at, I think would be appropriate. I don't foresee a number of appeals coming up next year. There's a couple that may, and that should still put me where I need to be. Travel, we've actually brought it down a bit from twenty-five hundred. It was budgeted for twenty-four. And, oh, we left it as-is.
I think the only other one that's changed is their software and services.
Right. Let me explain that.
And education.
These stickers that we use so that we don't have to buy new file cabinets and we can actually get into them, these have been utilized in the legal profession here in North Dakota my entire career. So if these were cars, we could get Pioneer plates for them. They quit making them this year. So ladies and I have been digging and digging, trying to find a substitute. We can get stickers that are similar to these, but I'm not gonna pay that. Agent, you told me, go ahead and spend that. I just can't bring my conservative butt to spend that kinda money for stickers. So we found, and we finally got firm quotes and everything on this, uh, by the middle of that last week. That's what held me off from getting it. I wanted to get that. It's a one-time purchase of about eight hundred and some dollars for a computer program with the supplies that come with it, should put us through twenty-five and into twenty-six. Once we have to just buy the supplies to work with that software, it'll be a nominal cost, so we'll be able to go back down like what we had before. So it's a one-time expense of eight hundred bucks that I'm grumbling, but it's gonna get us back where we can save the money like we were doing for decades. So that's, that's the one that's bumped up. Uh, our library costs from the bottom up, we're leaving. Education, training, I am bumping that up to five hundred because, from two fifty because normally I get my continuing legal education credits through the State's Attorneys Association, but the last three, four of those, I keep getting scheduled in the court, and I have to have those. Additionally, we're getting more training, and we're getting it pretty cheap for my victim witness coordinator. Shiloh, I have received numerous, numerous compliments about the quality of her work because of her experience. And to keep that quality where it's at and meet our requirements under the Marsage's Law Constitutional Amendment, between her and I, we'll spend another two hundred and fifty bucks. When it comes to CLEs, there are some that I will just pay for out of my own pocket. And as you folks know, I'm cheap. I make a lot of trips for the county, and I don't submit mileage because, well, it's something I'd wanna do anyway. But, you know, miscellaneous, we've left that at zero. Six fifty-one, machines and equipment purchases, uh, we're leaving that at the same number as last year. The software, that's the bump up from, uh, four oh four. We've already spent six fifteen this year, so I'm over on that category under a couple. So that's why I wanna bump that up to cover that software that we're getting for our labels. And office supplies, we're hoping we can keep it at that two twenty. So far this year, uh, we're about a little more than half of that budgeted amount, so we should be doing all right there. Uh, the membership fees, uh, that's staying the same. Uh, telephone, we're leaving that the same. And then, again, travel and per diem on line three forty-one, uh, we're leaving that the same as well.
You got a gold star. Rick gives you a gold star.
I think we're gonna...
Gee, I'll go tell my mommy, thank you. Well, you folks know when I come in here that I'm as stingy with county money as my own. In fact, Colin pointed out to me when I made that comment about six months ago. He said, "I've seen how you spend your money. You're stingier with the counties." I haven't bought any guns on the counties, the county staff.
He can repossess some.
Yeah.
Okay.
That, that's a good way for elected officials to get the wringer that I don't wanna go through.
Any questions for Todd?
I'm good.
Any other questions for us?
Uh, just one other thing on the salaries that I'm doing for my staff. This is gonna put us closer in line. Either one of these gals can make more money in the private sector. And yes, to a certain degree, we have better benefits that make up for some of that, but, uh, the private sector's catching up the public sector benefits really quick in this day and age.
Okay.
That's all I have, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And ladies.
Thanks, Son.
And then if you have any questions on that stores, store more store, where we're getting these label maker from, I do have the flyer on that. Michelle and Shiloh did quite a bit of research. We found one that its original stated advertised price looked like it would've been a little less, but when we looked at using it, it'd be twice what we're asking for, so we took the cheaper option.
Okay, thank you.
And with that, hopefully you can break for lunch.
Oh, we got one more.
Wanda and Alice.
Ah.
Two more. Yep.
Here, I was thinking I was getting you out for lunch.
Nope.
Appreciate the try, though.
We're back on time.
Yeah, we slid back on time.
I got a convenience store flash people in the fridge for lunch, so I'm gonna get to it.
I'm gonna beat you to your lunch pili's. Okay. Wanda.
Juan's here.
Yeah, she's here.
Okay, do we have her on here?
Page six.
Clerk of Court. Page six?
Yep.
All right.
Okay, I used, um, for the salaries, I used a dollar fifty an hour raise. So that brings the deputy salaries up to one hundred and eighteen thousand one oh two. And it brings the clerk's wages up to seventy-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-two.
Okay, and to be fair to you, uh, we're basically telling every department, those will be discussed altogether even later.
Okay.
Okay, so we're not gonna have a whole lot of discussion on that right now.
Sure.
Just in fairness to let you know, okay?
Okay, then let's go down to each line item. Starting with three eleven, I left that the same for the marriage license program at sixty dollars. And then the next one is three twelve, legal fees. I bumped that up to fifteen thousand because of our...
That's what we talked about, right?
Yep. Conversation we had.
The mental health stuff, right?
Yeah, because of the conversation we had a few weeks ago. And I think I'm up to almost ten thousand right now for this year.
Yeah.
I have one more bill to submit, and then one pending case, that will be another bill. So that's gonna throw us over ten thousand for this year so far. Okay, three sixteen, I don't have anything in that line item. Three forty-one, travel and per diem. I reduce that by two hundred dollars down to thirteen hundred. Telephone, I had the same, twenty-two of ten. Membership license and fees, I kept that at one fifty. Three seven, three seventy-six publications. I think the Hazen Star went up a couple dollars, so I, I bumped that up from forty-two to forty-five. Office supplies, four eleven, I kept the same. And miscellaneous, I kept at forty. Nine twenty, education and training, I bumped that up by a hun- Nine twenty, education and training, I bumped that up by a hundred, so it'd be five hundred. And then I didn't do anything with vital statistics, I stayed the same. So my pending budget is two hundred fifteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine.
So you said we're going to go over on that mental health with all those mental health ones?
Right.
Do you think we go over the fifteen even?
It depends. Because like in twenty-two, we only did twenty-eight, even though it was only twenty-eight hundred, but then twenty-three jumped, so it's probably going to... Just depend. Yeah, it just depends. It's basically for mental health cases.
Right.
Yeah.
It just seems like we're getting so much more mental health.
Right, and so much more complex cases.
Right.
You know, that's.
I just want to make sure that we're.
Repeat offenders is what's really throwing us over.
Throwing it over?
Yeah. Because they seem to take more, more assistance from the attorneys.
Okay.
Yeah, we've had a couple prekey defenders.
I'm hoping that like what Judge Wyler is looking at doing for mental health, like court, that hopefully some of this will settle. And look like there'll be better help for these people.
Within this next year?
She's trying.
Okay.
So.
If we would have contracted the entire amount with the state, the clerk of court, where does this, um... Legal fees, where does that fall under? Would the state be responsible for that?
I'm not sure. I can't find out, but.
Well, it doesn't matter because it is what it is today, so.
I think the state would pick it up, but I'm not sure.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Wanda?
Do you think in fifteen is good or do you want to bump that up? I mean, I don't know how many, how many hours it takes for the longest cases, but based on the going rate, that's only sixty hours of health cases.
The few that we've had are looking to hopefully be taken care of soon, so I don't, it just all depends.
I don't know, I'm just, I mean, when I talked to Mark, he was in that twenty to twenty-five thousand dollar range. We settled on fifteen. I mean, we've been budgeting a tenth of that. And we're obviously approaching ten thousand already for the year.
I think the reason we kind of settled on fifteen is it was just a little more than double of what we've already spent.
Right.
I think you're never going to win the game on this line.
Nope.
I mean, I'm comfortable with fifteen. I'm just raising the question.
I'm just saying we really need to keep an eye on this one.
Yeah.
Is what I'm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it was kind of like Terry said within me medical, we could have one individual that takes out both of these lines potentially.
Very quickly. Yeah, I think we just really need to keep a good eye on that one.
Yeah, it's like one of those tough ones, I swear you, you can have your, like, for myself, on both sides of that. You know, I want to make sure we have the money there to pay for it, but by the same, I don't want to say when let's budget thirty thousand. We only need, in the end, only need a thousand.
Right.
So it's, but if it's thirty, we gotta, it's one of those, we gotta pay it. So it's, uh, yeah, damned if you do, damned if you don't deal.
I think fifteen would be, of course, just pay it out of the general fund if we, if we have to.
Yeah, Wanda proposed the fifteen. She's kind of comfortable with that for now, so I think we stick with that. We understand that's one of those items.
Have no control over.
Right.
Right.
Unfortunately.
Hopefully it doesn't go with another, another zero behind that by the end of the year.
I hope not.
So, all right, anything else for Wanda?
I'm good.
Yep, that's it.
Anything for us? Any, anything more for us, Wanda?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I'm here to everybody else talk and not listen to you. I apologize.
There, we're getting ahead of time now. That's good.
Okay, I'm going to keep it that way.
Now, I got to find.
HR is stapled to the back of emergency management. So find the emergency management pack.
Which would be number one, should have been top on your packet if you haven't moved it.
Yep.
Emergency management, find that one because HR is at the back. Probably first in your hand.
Which one? No, Director of Taxiculmination.
Take my hands off.
Here it is. Oh, he was first on your pile.
The one right up front. Okay, mine says page fifty-four in the upper right-hand corner.
Yes.
All right.
So which one do you want to do first?
EM is on it.
Yeah, okay. All right, so under my salaries under line one one four, I just did the dollar fifty an hour as suggested.
But the thing with that, Alice, is twenty-eighty hours total.
No, I took, that's not.
If you're an exempt employee, twenty-eighty hours per year. If you want more hours, it'd be overtime.
No, can't be overtime because I'm salaried.
She's salaried.
I'm salaried. It can't be overtime.
Exactly. It's got to be twenty-eighty.
No, twenty thousand nine hundred and sixty for the salary.
Coming out of the emergency management.
Okay, because when I figured your, um, your dollar fifty, I did twenty-eighty. So maybe it was near, but I did twenty-eighty hours on your first salary. And then you did an additional on that. That's what I.
No, I, I split them out between EM and HR.
Okay, so how many hours you got in on EM?
Um, I think I figured twenty hours per week. So I think it was like half of that.
Okay, so how many hours for your other job then?
I did a quarter for EM and three quarters for HR.
All right, well, I'll redo the math on my thing, but I want to, we can talk about it. Because it, to me, it came up where you put more than twenty-eight hours. It's only three thousand, whatever it was on that chart for everybody, twenty-eighty hours.
But see, I didn't do twenty-eighty hours for EM.
You can't, well, for your whole job, okay, as far as the, when you guys made that motion, she added EM onto her job. She's got one job. She's employed by two separate things, one job, twenty-eighty hours per year.
Twenty-eighty, and so three quarters of that is fifteen sixty.
So EM is fifteen.
No, no, that would be.
So HR is one thousand five hundred and sixty hours.
Yeah, and EM would be five hundred and twenty, five hundred and twenty.
And the reason I split it out is because I need to know for that EMPG grant of how much I'm earning. So I need to have something in there for that grant.
Right. It's just that when I was doing the hours on the one, I came up with a total of twenty-eighty. And I didn't know how to split it because you never told me.
Okay, so the way you math it out, one-fourth of your total salary comes to two, twenty-nine sixty.
Correct.
All right.
However, I'm working more than a quarter hours. My hours are in EM.
See, when I do five hundred and twenty hours times a dollar fifty, I get seven hundred and eighty dollars, not nine hundred and sixty. So I get tw- twenty thousand seven hundred and eighty. And you're.
I get, yeah, I get seven hundred and eighty.
So you're sixty-five. Okay, so for the other one-five sixty times one point five, then I get.
Twenty-three forty? Like two thousand three hundred and forty, so whatever that adds up to.
Okay, hold on. Fifteen sixty times one point five. Yeah, twenty-three forty added on to your sixty-five thousand. So that'd be sixty-seven thousand three hundred and forty for the HR part. And then twenty thousand seven eighty for the EM part.
Oh, let's go back and see how I calculated that.
Okay.
The numbers. Use all the hours now.
I would agree with Carmen, I guess, on those.
Yep. I'll go back and let's see how I calculated. However, before we get to over, when we get to the HR parts, I do want to make a correction on there, so.
Okay, so right now.
We're on the EM. So I will double check the numbers for EM.
And in all fairness to everyone, salaries and wages will be discussed later. But we can go with.
We're taking everybody's numbers right now.
Yes, so.
And not making a decision on them at this point.
Okay.
All right, so I have nothing for clerical, nothing for vacation sick leave payout. Travel and per diem is, I put twelve hundred dollars. I think it was thousand last year scheduled. Um, the telephone, I split between HR and EM, so it's equally split. Membership license fees, that includes the emergency managers, North Dakota PIO, that would be the membership fees. Office supplies and operating, pretty, I, pretty set up for office supplies. I'm just not sure if something's going to come up or what, so I'm just, maybe that might be a little high. You know, we could probably decrease that a little bit. And then the radio tower lease, that is at fifteen hundred per year. Education and training, I did increase since this will be my first year as EM. I will be attending lots of training as pretty much the state wants me to take this training. So I'm more apt to know the job better. Advertising, I increased it to eight thousand because that's getting so expensive. Anytime you take a full-page ad out, it is horrendous. And I know the last few years it's been gone over, so I just increased it by a little bit, just so we're covered. Uh, mitigation planning grant, I didn't put anything in there. So the next line item would be the home on security grants. That would be for all our grants that we have out there. And the reason I put ninety-five thousand in there is because we as a county have to pay upfront for those grants when the, the work comes through. And then we do get reimbursed. So that's why I put it in the budget. So for example, on the bottom of my list, I have the sirens for the Buella Azen Bay. That would be like fifty thousand dollars. Um, the fifteen, county would have to pay fifteen percent of that, which would be seventy-five hundred. The HS grant, um, that's one hundred percent, the home on security grant that I applied for is for twenty-five thousand. And that again is a hundred percent funded by the federal government. And then the EMPG, EMPG grant is twenty-five thousand. Again, that's a hundred percent funded by the feds.
So if we put the expense here, then we'll put the grants in as a revenue.
That's the thing, you have to budget for the grants.
Right.
Well, we put that on the revenue side, the reimbursement.
Oh, absolutely. And under, you know, so it's.
Right.
It's a wash, but we're going to.
It's a wash. But you still have to have the money.
All right, always giving credit to whoever gets it.
So the budget won't be increased by ninety-five thousand in the end because you're going to have revenue of ninety-five thousand, so.
That's what I'm bringing up to you.
Yep.
Thank you for that.
Okay, the hazardous chemicals?
Yep, the hazardous chemicals. That's a revenue of thirteen hundred dollars per year.
Okay, here's the thing, she has to put, in order to spend that money, because it's fees coming from all these chemical plants we have in the county, DGC and all that. Right now, there is a balance of seventeen thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars with chemical plants. In order to spend them, you have to budget. This is eight zero five five is the fine number. This has been collecting over the years. Because we only get like this year, we got one thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. We did, you know, small payments, but it's very hard to spend, but I'm encouraging Alice to find a way to spend it. So that's why she needs to budget for them.
How much is in there now?
Seventeen thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So then this way, and it's, it is specifically used for chemicals, for like, if the fire departments need, I don't know.
Like if we have a train derailment with chemicals, they need the equipment. If they, if any fire department knows of any equipment they may need to address hazardous chemical spills, they should let me know because we do have the money in there to.
But for the sake of discussion, there's never been any money spent in the last three years.
I haven't, I spent it once when we put up a chemical washing bay for the animals. That was like fifteen years. Other than that, we tried to buy things, but I'm hoping they open it up a little more. It's hard to buy things, but at least she's got an expense account now, or you know what I mean? She's budgeting in for it and looking at it and then not letting it go.
But then my question would be, do we really need to budget for thirteen hundred?
Is thirteen hundred as a revenue or an expense?
It's a revenue.
Otherwise, it's a.
We get that every year.
But she has to put it as an expense or as a.
Wait a minute, whoa, 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 whoa.
And the only way she can spend it is if she puts it on here. Right, right?
Right.
Okay, got it.
Hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it. If there's seventeen thousand in that account, it's not a red line until we hit seventeen, eighteen thousand.
This is a revenue account. You need to budget it. This is the expense account that she's budgeting out of. So that when we spend that money, it's accounted for. Every penny has to be shown within our revenues and our expenditures.
But if she.
You don't just take it out of account without accounting.
If you spend money on hazardous chemical, that money comes out of this account. So then why would we have to collect money if we already have money in it?
This is, no, we're not going to.
Once again, I'm going to go way off the rail here. If there were five million dollars in here, why would we even have to budget anything for it?
Because you got to show where you spent it. You're accountable for where you spent it. You don't want to just take money out of a revenue line and not.
But.
You know, we document.
But this is, this is thirteen hundred dollars we're going to charge the taxpayers?
No, 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 it's a revenue.
Okay.
It's a revenue.
We're good.
This is what we get every year.
Yeah, Jean's good.
Simple German here. Thank you.
That's good.
We're done with that one.
So any questions on the EM budget?
No.
Okay. Okay, so the HR budget. I put sixty-eight, one-twenty because I thought we were only going to do the dollar fifty an hour. But when I did the study, the low wage for HR in the counties is seventy-five thousand. So I'm requesting to change that number to seventy-five thousand.
Is that for full-time?
Yes.
In addition to the twenty-seven thousand for EM?
Okay, that, once again, that's discussion.
But when you were comparing it to other HR, were they full-time HR or what?
So we would have to take like three-fourths of the seventy-five.
Three-fourths of seventy-five, gotcha. Can I try this? You're quicker with your numbers there.
Uh, fifty-six to fifty.
Fifty-six to fifty, okay.
But kind of what we mentioned before, we'll, we'll look at the requests and then.
Yep.
Finally, is that a different thing?
So yeah, that won't work out with what I'm making right now. So just leave it at sixty-eight, one-twenty for the dollar.
We'll come back to.
Yeah. It's so confusing when you have two positions. Um, vacation sick leave, nothing, consultant fee zero, travel per diem, three thousand. That's what I put last year. It probably will go down. Six seventy-five for telephone, three fifty for membership and license fees. That would be for, um, SHER, Central Dakota Human Resources Association. Publication subscriptions, um, three hundred, office supplies, operating, I have it three thousand, but that will definitely go down. And then education, training, twelve hundred.
And within your travel and per diem, that's for trainings and then also going out for like, um, interviews and stuff like that.
Correct, yes, yes. Because like I do go out to like the highway department. I do go out to the landfill extension office. I don't make them come here. I go out to them.
Okay, any more questions for Alice?
I'm good.
Any more questions for us? Okay, thank you, Alice. And we got our meeting right into lunch break. So we will. Yeah, we will recess for lunch, and we'll reconvene at. One o'clock. Correct? Am I, I want to screen with me.
Yeah, no, what?
Do you want to come back sooner?
Do you want to come back earlier and do Veterans Superintendent of Weed?
If I can get done earlier, I would appreciate such things.
Yeah.
Do we want to just do them right now?
Or, yeah, should we?
We can.
Let's keep going and.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Finish those three and then.
Veteran Services, do we want to do that one next? I gotta find it. Yes, someone might have to help me again, but I think I got it here.
They're all three in order, starts with weed, of course.
They were in order, okay.
Well, what are we doing here?
Okay, Mom?
Listen here.
Which one are we doing, is weed?
I got page, uh, Veteran Services, I thought. No, I'll do whatever, whichever one you guys want to do.
Just go down the line.
Veteran Services, minus page one-zero-seven.
One-zero-seven.
Okay. This isn't what they turned in. Is it? Because I don't have it, I don't have it on me.
Okay.
I thought they had other salaries, I thought, oh, sorry, sorry.
Right here.
Sorry.
They didn't put in.
Yeah, they don't have. Okay.
Yeah.
I was out of line.
That's what he turned in.
I was out of line to begin with, I got the wrong department.
And then with the pay, you could see in that chart, I gave you the dollar fifty. Okay, workman's comp would be fifty dollars for this, and I don't think that's in the original.
He said fifty?
Fifty dollars, line I know, two-forty-one.
What's, uh, what's the other salaries with one-fourteen?
Okay, so his pay would be, um, if with the dollar fifty, it would be, according to this, twenty-four, four, four-oh-two-eighty-four.
Twenty-four, four-oh-two?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, there, there's gonna be.
She just.
On the chart.
And if you add his retirement, the total salary. But anyway, I added in, also, his retirement is just one thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven, so I had a total with wage and retirement, it's twenty-six thousand two-seventy.
Twenty-six-two-seventy.
Yep, now this will also be nil, so we include this in his nil, so we can mill it.
But.
Otherwise, everything else.
This could change, be based on what we do by.
We start.
Yeah, this is gonna be crazy, because we have to budget something right now.
Right.
And by the time our budget is finalized, that's when we're gonna be discussing what we're gonna be doing.
Hiring or contracting or whatever.
Okay.
Right.
So for now, twenty-six thousand two-seventy?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so.
And then the fifty for the workman's comp.
Yep.
Health insurance.
That, he doesn't get.
Yeah.
Why is his telephone so high?
Because of his, he has, um, he has a fax line.
Oh.
And that fax line is expensive. So that is his, that is his correct, well, for a year, that's for a year. It has something to do with the veteran services.
Because my printer has, you know, like, you can get a printer with, sometimes with that in it, too, copier printer.
I don't know that he's got a separate one, I think it's just the line itself.
It's just the line.
Because they were moving lines the other day.
You have to ask him. Yeah, he's not here today.
No, that's fine, it's just a.
Something to think about?
I could have a note and ask him.
Yeah, my, my question would be.
I think.
Is a separate line required for the fax line?
But Dawn had the same thing, it was her fax lines, and that's why hers is so expensive, too, it's the fax lines.
I don't think it's something to look into, to see what we possibly can do.
Oh, he actually went down two hundred in the budget inning, that's a good one.
Yeah.
I was just wondering why his one was so much more than other people's, that's all.
Yeah, we checked that, that's.
I think this one is. We got the numbers, any other questions on it?
No, I think we leave it as it is.
Okay. Superintendent of Schools, hey, that's, I think, the next one on my, in order, page thirteen.
So he doesn't get a salary from us?
Um, he does, he just didn't put it in there, his salary now would be eleven thousand two-sixty-eight-seventy-five.
And that includes retirement or whatever and everything, or does he not have that?
He does not get it.
Okay. Thank you.
What's the other salaries?
Um, oh, wait a minute. No, no, okay, other salaries are his salaries, but see, he put ten thousand down there, and actually with the dollar fifty raise.
That makes it eleven-two-sixty.
He was at ten thousand seven eighty.
Okay.
So that one's supposed to be.
Oh, it's not elected officials, sure, he's not elected, okay, so that goes on the other.
I just wrote it about.
But he, like, he, his, his budget for like the premises rental was one I was looking at when Craig was saying about their rental business, like, I don't, I've. I'm not sure that, like, he needs a full office with a separate location, but there might be something in Centricote that says he does have to, but that might just be one of the rental places that we could look at, yes, it's only three thousand, but does it need to be for something that's not being habitated often?
So does he have two office locations?
Yeah, he's got one for the city of Hazen at City Hall, and then he's got another one for Superintendent of Schools, which has the maps and like the file cabinets of all the records and stuff, so it does need some room, but I'm not sh-
So you had an actual, physical, separate office?
Yes, I've been there. I visited once.
And I became aware because of the phone.
Yeah, and so we're paying, we're, I'm not saying that we don't need to pay for a location and whatever, but maybe it's something that could, could be consolidated into Craig's office at the extension, if they've got somewhere, something that could be, or something over here, a location, something that could be consolidated.
Where you save money and pay.
Pay the city.
Pay the city.
Pay it or something to that effect, a, a set rate, if they have enough storage area for all of the school record, whatever it takes, yeah. Because there's, I mean, there's like, I think there was four file cabinets in there, like the old. Just something to maybe look at, um, as leases are going on.
So you're saying that for the records, we would probably try and find a spot for the, for the records, and then as far as an office space, that could be something different. Doesn't have to be one location.
Potentially, I don't, yeah.
I mean, that's what you're.
You know, like, is it something that the Veteran Service Office and him could share a location, because they're not here on the same days, but we store his records in the storage closet?
Gotcha.
Down the hall, I don't know, just something, because we're paying for telephone, and we're paying for rental, and public, I mean.
I think this is another one of those discussions that we will be having in about two months.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay?
Correct.
Yes.
So I'm gonna ask Jamie that we probably don't beat this one up anymore.
I get that.
Okay, but I understand what you're saying, I got it.
And maybe we're in a lease agreement for another five years, and we.
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm just saying.
Oh, that'd be something we.
Basically.
I was gonna say, who's got the BA, but I think I know who that is, and maybe he needs to check that out.
Do you need a mirror?
Pardon?
Do you need a mirror?
Yep. Okay, I have to check out if we have a contract. Superintendent Schools, see, I was already ready to be.
See, but I have Superintendent of Schools, you have Veterans.
Veterans, yeah.
So I will ask if we're in a contract.
Okay. I, I don't know, I was on Veterans.
Oh, my Lord.
Because, okay, sorry. Okay.
Yeah, otherwise.
Yeah.
It's just the registration fees.
Yeah. So.
And publications.
For Superintendent?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But not by like, or ginormous amount.
I think we're good on.
Okay.
Superintendent.
Weed.
Weed.
That one is Jean.
That's Jean.
Where's the weed?
Oh, boy.
Weed.
And this has the dollar fifty incorporated?
Uh, no, he put those in there from last year, so, okay, so.
Okay.
One-on-four, other salaries would be sixty-eight thousand four-fifty-one. Uh, one-on-six, uh, thirty-one thousand nine eighty, and then the retirement share would be eighty-six hundred.
Thank you.
I need to come around by, I missed it.
Oh, you want me to get it? And this also is.
Workman's comp. Health insurance. Yeah, I'm trying to run through these real quick. There was one in there, I thought there was a pretty sus- Is that on the next page?
On the grand scheme of things, he's pretty close.
Okay.
And this is its own mill, Abby?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I thought the chemicals was a big increase, but I see he's only got one-eighty on here, which was last year.
Yeah.
I thought that was, okay, not gonna dig out my notes.
Chemical prices that we spend this year are, on the final, pretty close to the same two.
Okay, I don't have anything to add to this. All right, well, we're done with, with the weed department. Anything else?
That's kind of all our.
Any other requests, and we break for lunch now? Okay?
Re- resume at one?
We resume at one, or if every, well, no, we resume at one. Because our, oh, and our auditor's here, so.
And the only thing is, I'm.
So to speak, for the people to show up.